Good morning, everyone. Jake, I wanted to check and make sure that you can hear us in the Zoom room.
Hi, Sam. Yes, we can hear you in the Zoom room.
Okay, great. And Sheriff Randall, I think we're ready to begin when you are.
All right, we're ready. Welcome, everybody, to the April 12, 2022 Board of Supervisors meeting. We're gonna go ahead and get started here and call this meeting to order. We're gonna start out with a moment of silence, and I think Vice Chair Scott has a moment of silence.
Yes, this last week, we lost a very loved community member, Juan Ortega. If you knew Juan, you knew his smile and his laugh, and he leaves behind a wife and children.
Supervisor Pisca, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Does any supervisor or anybody have one of those items needed to, for addition? No? Doesn't look like we have one. With that, we'll move on to item five, approval of the consent agenda. Consent agenda is non-controversial items that we will pass in one motion. If you would desire to pull one, or someone from the Board of Supervisors decides to pull one, we will do so and come back to it at a later time. That's more accommodating to the schedule, so we don't interrupt any of the other timed items. It looks like C A O Hutchinson, you have your hand up.
The Department of Social Services has requested to pull Agenda Item 5.14, and they will put it on for next week, the 19th.
Okay, it looks like that one comes off. Are there any from the Board of Supervisors? Open it up to the public. Anybody in the chambers would like to pull anything from the consent agenda? And we're gonna look online for Zoom. I don't see any hands up, so I'll bring it back to the Board of Supervisors for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Consent Agenda 5.1 through 5.13.
Second.
Five of motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We are now past that item, so we'll go on to our timed items. First timed item is our 9:05, and that is our pet of the week. And I need another minute, so. Yeah, it looked like someone had their hand up, but I think we got, I don't know what that was about, so.
You have two more seconds.
I think so.
There you go.
All right, 9:05. Lake County Care and Control Pet of the Week. So we have our animal control here. It'll come up and introduce the pet of the week. It looks like, he or she looks like, because I can't tell from here. It's really pretty.
Good morning, everyone.
Hi.
I'm John. This is Blue. Blue is a four-year-old female Alaskan Husky. She's been with us since February. She's spayed. She's up to date on all of her shots. She's very affectionate with people, as some of you saw when you came in. She's very patient with other animals. She likes to play a lot. She's a high-energy, that's this breed typically. Needs a lot of exercise, but she is very, very loving and affectionate, and very well-mannered for a husky. I have a husky, and she is wild. Not, she would be all over this room. So she is in kennel number 25, and she is available for adoption. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Said, "well behaved" for a husky. Wow. All right. Well, that was a good start of the day. We'll move on to our 9:06, Public Input. Public input is where you can bring anything to the board and discuss for three minutes if it's not appearing on the agenda for today. So is there anyone in the chambers that has something they would like to, to comment on for public input? I'm not seeing anybody. I see somebody on Zoom, so I see two people. Okay, so Randy Wilk, if you can unmute. You have three minutes, and let's ensure that it's not something that's already covered on the agenda.
Thanks, Supervisor Grant, Randall, sorry. My name is Randy Wilk. I live up in Clear Lake Oaks Hillside, what has been a very quiet and pretty setting within close vicinity of a vineyard called Monte Lago. Now the same owner is proposing a large industrial cannabis 22-acre project named Monte Cristo. Presently, the project is being processed by the planning department and up for a vote for approval soon. All the neighbors, like the neighbors in High Valley and I, are not interested in another large cannabis farm being developed in Clear Lake Oaks. In fact, 12 of 16 large projects are slated for approval in our area alone. This project is situated too close to residents in East Lake Elementary. We do not want this project because it will bring unusual high traffic and congestion of 50 to 100 or more cars a day, environmental issues, ground pollution feeding into the lake, coupled with constant noise, picked-up dust as fine as talcum powder, the cause of rising crime, and safety concerns for us and the kids down at the elementary school. This project can cause accidental fires that could easily turn into large wildfires, bring on transient workers sleeping in cars on the side of the road, and on private property, which can all come from an industrial cannabis farm. This combined with heavy hauling of 18-wheeler trucks further degrading our narrow roads, which are already neglected and need of dire repair. In addition, the proposed 22-acre crop projected to consume about 10 to 20 million gallons of water this year, especially crazy when we are in a mega drought right now. By the way, I don't know why proposed project Monte Cristo would be exempt from any upcoming moratoriums like 6.9 Agenda. There should be no exceptions during this period of drought, high mega drought. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk. And next time, let's stay away from the agenda items like 6.9, because if that's the case, you can just comment during that. So is there anyone else that has any items they would? Or I don't see anybody with any hands up, so I think we're gonna close Public Input and move on to our 9:07. Our 9:07 is a presentation of proclamation designating the month of April 2022 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Lake County, and Vice Chair Scott will be reading this proclamation.
Good morning. Good morning. Come up and join me today. Come up here.
Up there?
Yeah, come up here with me. Don't make me stand alone. That's what it's all about, right? Not standing alone? Great. I'm gonna start reading here. The Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California, proclamation designating the month of April 2022 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Lake County. And thank you for coming and standing with me today, because as I said, it's all about not standing alone and having others to lean on when you need assistance. Whereas in 2021, Lake County agencies responded to the need of at least 201 sexual assault victims and their significant others and/or family members. And whereas no one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own, and the partnership between public and private Lake County agencies is invaluable. And whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that children are being abused, one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before the age of 18. And I'd have to say, those are numbers that are being reported. It's probably higher than that. Whereas the Lake County Resource Center has been instrumental in leading the way in the county of Lake in addressing sexual assault by providing 24-hour hotline service, continuing support, advocacy, and accompanying victims and survivors and their significant others. And whereas ending sexual assault in Lake County must include active public and private efforts to speak out against sexual violence. And it is time for all of us to start the conversation, take appropriate action, and support one another to create a safer environment for all residents. And whereas the staff and volunteers at the Lake Family Resource Center, Rape Crisis Center work year-round to encourage every person to speak out against sexual violence and to support survivors by providing prevention, education, and survivor empowerment information. And whereas the Lake Family Resource Center and the District Attorney's Office, Victim Witness Division, local law enforcement agencies, hospitals, and schools have set an important example of how collaborative relationships improves the quality of service for those impacted by sexual violence. Now therefore, be proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby designate the month of April 2022 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Lake County. April 6 as Sexual Assault Awareness Day in action of Lake County and urges all government, schools, businesses, and community members to participate in the sponsorship events this month to increase awareness and public support for creating communities free from sexual exploitation. Pass and adopted this 12th day of April 2022.
We have tens of people on them. Let me count. I'm gonna cast those out. Okay. Right, you talk. Okay. Stand on this type dial. Pretty good. Okay. All right, so the 201 is the known number of sexual assault survivors in Lake County. So if you do the math on that, it comes out to an average of three a week. So every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, somebody is sexually assaulted in our county. So the 201 is also just the known numbers of survivors. 63% go unreported. So to all those unreported sexual assault survivors, please know that we believe you. Our Rape Crisis Center has offered 2,000 services to survivors for 2021, sorry. Those services include providing support during police interviews, forensic exams, counseling, and temporary shelter. You do not need to report the assault to authorities to get services from us, and our services are all free and confidential. And it also doesn't matter when the sexual assault was placed. It could have been 25 years ago, and you can still come and see us. So we also have some things, like Family Resource Center has some things that we've been doing for the month. We have 201 teal flags right outside our office in Kelseyville for our survivors. On Wednesday, the 27th, we have Denim Day. And for those who may not know, Denim Day started in 1999 when an Italian Supreme Court overruled a sexual assault conviction because they said that the survivor's jeans were too tight. So she must have consented. So we're asking everyone to wear jeans on Wednesday, the 27th. We also want to thank you guys for this and for the proclamation, because we know sexual assault is not an easy conversation, so thank you.
Come on up here. Somebody's gonna take you.
Oh, wait. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the great work you do.
All right. Supervisor Sabatier?
I appreciate the proclamation. I don't think there's a single year that this proclamation doesn't go by that that judge is not being talked about for his absolutely disgusting decision. He will go in history as one of the worst judges in our history. And unfortunately, he will be remembered exactly for that one thing.
Like Bill Buckner. All right. Next on our agenda, is there any other public input? I'm gonna make sure that that happens, so. Don't see anybody. Okay. Bring it back. 6.4, Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Week of April 10 through 16, 2022 as National Public Safety Dispatchers Week. Supervisor Sabatier will read this proclamation along with the sheriff.
I get people in the back aren't coming up.
I need an arrow.
Call them out.
It's balance.
Sorry, Sam.
So before I start, I just want to say a few words about our dispatchers. The dispatchers are the voice in our law enforcement's ear. They provide the details that they've received. They try to provide every bit of information to keep our officers safe. That is probably their number-one duty, is to make sure that they provide that direct information. And also, in a sense, because of the harrowing experiences that our law enforcement go through constantly, they are also their first counseling appointment, in a sense. They're there to help them walk through that. And so I really appreciate the fact that we do this every single year. I know that we struggle in keeping our dispatchers, our vacancies low, in making sure that we have. So those that are there absolutely are truly appreciated because they help keep our officers safe. Proclamation designating the week of April 10 through 16, 2022 as National Public Safety Dispatchers Week. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require law enforcement, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency medical professionals is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our law enforcement officers and fire personnel is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Lake County Central Dispatch Center. And whereas public safety dispatches are the first and can be the most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services and are the vital link for our law enforcement officers and fire personnel by monitoring their activities by radio providing them with information and ensuring their safety. And whereas the public safety dispatches of the Lake County Sheriff's Office have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients exhibiting compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors does hereby designate the week of April 10 through 16, 2022 as National Public Safety Dispatchers Week in Lake County and encourages all citizens to join in recognizing the commitment of public safety dispatchers in our communities to preserve the safety of us all. Pass and adopted this 12th day of April 2022 and signed by our board chair.
I want to thank the board for recognizing our dispatchers. Oftentimes, our dispatchers go unrecognized. As you can see, there's none of them here today. The ones that are working are working, and the ones that are sleeping are sleeping. And we're pretty short-staffed. But I assure you that they appreciate this as much as I do. Our dispatchers work a very challenging and demanding job. Oftentimes, there's not many jobs that you can have where you might be the last person on earth that somebody talks to. There's not many jobs where you can go from being forced to stay awake at 3:00 in the morning with no phone calls and no activity coming in to instantly going to a fire that requires evacuation of hundreds of homes on little or no notice. The work that they do is very demanding and very stressful, and they are our ears out on the street. They get information, they relay it to us. And as Supervisor Sabatier said, they keep us safe in law enforcement, not only for the Sheriff's Office, but for the Lakeport Police Department here as well. And thank you for recognizing their hard work.
Thank you for that. Any supervisors have any comments they would like to add? Anyone from the public? Not seeing anyone. I'll bring it back to the board for our 6.5, which is our 9:15 a.m. item, sitting as the Lake County Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. And do we need our?
We need our? Yes, Mr. Chair, we need to invite in Ms. Deborah Figaroa, who is the resident board member that serves with your board for this agenda item. And she is in the Zoom. Deborah, if you can hear me, if you would accept the request to join us as a panelist, you'll be able to come in with your camera.
I see her. Okay.
Here she comes. Okay, if you don't have a camera, Deborah, you can just unmute yourself so the board can hear you. Here she is. Thank you, Deborah. But you're still muted.
Yeah, you're still muted, Deborah.
There we go.
All right, we're all set. So I'll read the item. Sitting as the Lake County Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, A. Consideration, First Amendment to the 2021 Agreement to Develop Affordable Housing by and between the Lake County Housing Authority and Rural Committees, Communities, I'm sorry, Housing Development Corporation, and B. Consideration of Request for Audit. With this, we will give the first item, I think, to Ms. Grant, County Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've provided in my memo to your board a brief history of how this has come about over time. You'll see here that in 2021, there was an opportunity to renegotiate a prior agreement with RCHDC, which I've described. That was done, and your board had approved it. And we've also been making contact with the Oversight Board for the successor agency for Lake County redevelopment. And after several meetings with the Oversight Board, I had drafted some amending language to the existing agreement that your board had approved. And that language was suggested to be taken by the Oversight Board, the suggestion, rather, was by the Oversight Board to bring that before the housing authority for your consideration and determination. This is a draft First Amendment to the 2021 Agreement for the Development of Affordable Housing on Collier Avenue. The agreement itself, when you're ready, I can go through the terms of the amendment, which are, I've tried to put it in such a way that you can clearly see the provisions that are being adjusted in the amendment, so there won't be any confusion, either by the authority or by the public.
All right. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, and thank you for that clarification needed. So sitting as the chair of the redevelopment agency and the board appointee, as Anita said, we have had multiple meetings. Obviously, as we move forward in supporting affordable housing in Lake County, I think this is something we need to, you know, if we can take care of this today, this is gonna help us move forward and, once again, just support those housing opportunities that are here in Lake County. I know it has been multiple meetings. I was not at the last meeting because of personal issues, but I'm glad that it is here today, so hopefully we can come to a finalization and help move forward with this. So there's been a lot of work done by staff. I want to thank staff for putting this together, bringing it to the board, working with RDA, and getting it to this point. But hopefully we get some clarification today and finish this item to move forward.
I will say that the Oversight Board has been extremely gracious in reviewing this information and providing input and asking questions. And you know, affordable housing was one of the goals for redevelopment. And even when redevelopment was then dissolved, as it existed in California, the statute still made it clear that there's an ongoing commitment to affordable housing. So in that regard, while there have been some blips along the way, some missteps along the way, the overarching goal of affordable housing is being maintained. And these amendments seek to strengthen the housing authority's position and the use of these housing assets. So in essence, what you're doing now, if you approve this, is improving the likelihood for the affordable housing project to go forward and strengthening the housing authority's position, should it not for any reason, and also then assuring the Oversight Board that there will be an opportunity to recapture certain assets if an affordable housing project cannot be put together. Though I will say that everything points to a successful project moving forward in the future.
Thank you, Anita. Supervisor Pisca?
Just for clarity, and I think I know the answer, but just so we can say it out loud. Do all parties agree to this?
It's my understanding, and certainly Carol can speak to that with more authority, but it's my understanding that the other party to the agreement, RCHDC, does agree with these provisions.
Great. Yes, and their director, Ryan LaRue, is in the Zoom with us. And when you're ready for Anita to review the changes, he may want to comment on that.
Okay, so should I? Yeah, I'll go with Ryan. Ryan, if you're on, you can unmute and put your camera on. And do you have anything you'd like to add, sir?
Hi, board. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, sorry, my camera's not working currently. But yes, RCHDC agrees to the terms. We're fully committed to bringing this project to fruition. And as you mentioned, we've been working for quite some time with staff now and are very excited to be at this point. And we're very close to fully financing the project with your approval at the board level. So thank you for your continued efforts.
Thank you, Ryan.
And, Mr. Chair, anytime you're ready, I'm happy to go through the amendments, if you like.
Would you like to say something first?
I'm gonna wait for the amendment first.
Okay, yeah, we'll go through the amendments, Ms. Grant. Thank you.
The first one is in addition to Section 2.1.8. The 2021 agreement's included as part of your PAC material, so you can refer there. But separately stated, this is an addition. And what this essentially says is that if for any reason the housing authority obtains ownership of the property due to default, which is described in Section 4, the housing authority then agrees that it will use the property solely for residential occupancy by low-income and very-low-income households, which shall include persons suffering from mental disorders or substance abuse disorders. Now, there may be... Now, there may be... Your authority may decide that you don't want the word "shall," in other words, you don't want to obligate the... Your obligation as an authority to a particular category of homeless people rather than making it generally available, and that's certainly something that you may want to discuss today. If for any reason the housing authority should sell the property, any monies from that sale would then be returned to the successor agency for distribution to the taxing entities. In other words, if housing is not... Does not come to fruition as contemplated by the parties, the monies would return to the taxing agencies unless the housing authority could make use of the property itself for that same purpose. Section 2.2.7 of Section 2.2, RCHDC responsibilities, is simply modified to describe the circumstances of the default, wherein they agree to convey the property to the housing authority for $1, executing a quitclaim deed in favor for that purpose. Section 2.9 is added to 2.2, whereby RCHDC covenants and agrees that throughout the term of the agreement, the property shall be used solely for residential occupancy by low-income, very-low-income households, which shall include persons suffering from mental disorders or substance abuse disorders who are at risk of becoming homeless. Section 4, default, is modified to essentially set forth in greater detail the circumstances of the default, explaining what could give rise to default, breach of covenants contained in the agreement, insolvency. It also describes, and I do see that under ABC, I could not for the life of me get the copyright symbol out of the C between the perenns, and unfortunately, yelling at the machine didn't help either, but that hopefully can be corrected. It also explains the remedies under Section 4.2, the surrender of the property, with some additional language to ensure that everybody understands what the default means and why the property would be essentially defaulted to the housing authority for $1. And so the provisions all in and of themselves seek to, again, strengthen the housing authority's position moving forward. I think it speaks well of RCHDC that they have no problem with agreeing to any of these provisions. I think there's been stated assurances, and I think that the funding, et cetera, seems to be moving forward properly. So these are provisions to ensure that should something go wrong, the housing authority will still be able to utilize the property for affordable housing, and if that does not come to fruition and the property is sold, then the monies would go back to the taxing entities, since it would no longer be a housing asset.
Thank you. Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you very much, and thank you for these amendments. This has been an interesting process to get to this point, and I think that everything's looking a lot more comfortable at this moment in time. It started with the forgiving of the loan, and I'm glad that now we're kind of giving We're being more sensitive to the taxing agencies whose monies have been utilized thus far to make this happen, which includes ours as well. What I do want to talk about, this was already kind of brought up by our County Council, Ms. Grant, is a couple of things, and I guess I'll start first with, we're working with I don't want to change what they're working towards, they've already made enough strides with behavioral health to move forward. That has its own pathway to go through, but there's no timeline. And I know that in the last agreement that we had before, that ended in 2017, which is how we ended up here, it was a five-year timeline, and then check in again with the housing authority to see if you've made enough progress. This is not our money. It's a mixture of money from different agencies, and I just want to make sure that we hold ourselves accountable for the money that has been given to us to accomplish this goal and that we kind of create a similar timeline schedule that was created back in 2012 with anticipation that the project would be completed by 2017, which it was not. This is money that we've had partially, I think it started in 2004, 2005, obviously there was a crash, but then there was another loan done in 2009. So this has been a long time on the books, and I just want to make sure to keep the fire on rather than just say we have an agreement and that there's no timelines within that agreement. And it would just be checking back in with us, the housing authority, to check in where we were. The previous wording was substantial progress has been made. I want to make sure, because right now we're looking at a very specific type of project rather than just housing project, and maybe the specific type of project is what may hold us up from being able to move forward, and maybe there needs to be some changes to that. But if we don't have that check-in, if we don't have that kind of timeline set in, then it could sit here for another 10 years, and we may still end up in the same place we have been over the course of this process. Then I want to skip to the part where it defaults back to the county. We can get the property back for $1. I'd like to also set a timeline. Again, we're holding other people's money so that we can go ahead and make sure to continue to hold the fire to our feet to get something accomplished on that property, to get a housing project. And as suggested by Ms. Grant, I'd love to get rid of the "which shall include" and just keep it open, that we want low to very-low income housing, and if it happens to be for a more specific category, then we can make that happen as we do it, but if we say "shall," then that limits us. We know we need housing as a whole, and if there's a project that's easier to push forward, then I think we need to get housing done rather than being stagnated by not getting something done. And again, this is if it defaults back to us, which means that RCHDC has failed to accomplish their goal. At that point, I think we need to open it up and make it... Try to make it more vague rather than very specific as to what we're trying to accomplish. Again, I think the original goal with the money that was funded for this was for just housing, not very specific, as we have it right there. And again, that doesn't mean that we can't do it for those people. And so those are my comments on the amendments.
Ms. Grant?
I would say that with regard to the timeline for RCHDC, if you refer to Section 2.2.8 of the 2021 Agreement, which is again attached as part of this packet, provided that RCHDC has secured the necessary funding for the project, RCHDC agrees to use good faith, commercially reasonable efforts to complete construction of the project and obtain a certificate of occupancy for the project on or before five years after the effective date. So there is a timeline for RCHDC.
I apologize for missing that.
That's okay. It's a long agreement. As far as the issue with regard to the housing authority, you can certainly change the "shall" to "may," which "may include."
That's what I was going to ask, if we could just do the "may."
And that's an easy fix on its face, and that would allow then the housing authority to expand its use of that property for affordable housing. And again, depending upon the timeline, it is difficult to know just exactly who's going to be most at need in any given situation, and it's likely your authority's going to want to gear it toward the people who are most in need of the housing. So that type of flexibility should not avoid anything. With regard to a timeline on your authority, the same vagaries of the future in terms of how you might direct the affordable housing to any particular group are going to apply with regard to a timeline. Funding can sometimes be time-consuming and difficult, so to have a timeline imposed upon your authority... It was suggested to do it based on an event, if the housing authority were to sell the property. You can certainly impose a timeline, but I would be cautious in terms of a timeline for your authority, because coordinating funding and putting a project together for a small housing authority in Lake County can be rather time-consuming and somewhat daunting. So if you're going to use a timeframe, I would suggest a generous one.
Supervisor Sabatier?
And I forgot to mention that I think that offering another five years just to make it so that there's absolutely enough time to be able to accomplish a goal of finding a developer, looking for funds, similar to what's being offered for RCHDC.
The only thing I would note is that pursuant to 2.8.8, the precatory phrase to "agrees to act within five years" is "provided that RCHDC has secured the necessary funding." So one would assume that that should then apply to your housing authority as well before you start a clock, just simply, again, because depending upon the economic circumstances and where the state of California and the County of Lake is years hence, it would be a shame to lose the asset just because the timeline prediction was a tad narrow.
All right. Is there anything from the Commission? I think it is, right? More from the Commission? No. Open it up for public input. Is there anybody in the chambers that would like to talk on this item? All right, so, anybody on Zoom? I don't see it. With that, I'll bring it back to the board for action on this item for A. I know that we talked about some different verbiage, so I think we would just add those implementing...
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and attempt the motion here and make sure I try and cover the... So I move to approve the First Amendment to the 2021 Agreement to the Development of Affordable Housing by and between the Lake County Housing Authority and the Rural Community Housing Development Corporation with the amendments suggested today.
And if I may just ensure clarity on my end...
And that that would be under Section 2.1.8, Housing Authority Responsibilities, that where it reads on the fourth line from the top, "which shall include persons suffering from mental disorders," which "may include..."
Yes.
And in terms of the timeline with regard to the housing authority's ability to maintain the property unless it... As a housing asset, unless it sells the property, which obviously would change its status as a housing asset, what type of timeframe? Are you looking for something that essentially mirrors?
Yes.
All right, so it would be "provided the housing authority has secured funding, the housing authority agrees to use good faith, reasonable efforts to complete construction of a project and obtain a certificate of occupancy on or before five years of receiving ownership," or something like that?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure.
No, thank you for the clarification.
That helps.
And I second that.
So I have a motion and a second.
Mr. Chair, should we confirm that Mr. LaRue is okay with those changes?
Oh, yes, Mr. LaRue, yes, thank you for that. Mr. LaRue, if you're on and you heard that, do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you. No comments. Approved.
Okay, thank you.
It all affects the defaulted status at that point.
Yeah. All right. With that, we will go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor?
I think we need to do a roll call because we have one on Zoom.
Oh, that's right. Johanna, can you please conduct the roll call? Good catch.
So Commissioner Simon?
Yes.
Commissioner Sabatier?
Aye.
Commissioner Scott?
Aye.
Commissioner Pyska?
Yes.
Commissioner Figaroa?
Yes.
And Commissioner Crandall?
Yes.
Thank you.
And now we'll move on to Item B, and this is the request for an audit. Supervisor Sabatier, this is your item.
Yes, so this directly correlates to the forgiveness of the loan that we did. We forgave about $1.2 million. I have asked for documentation of money coming in and money coming out, and what I've been provided has been very vague and not specific, and I just... This is not our money, and if we can't provide specific proof of... What I was shown was $1.5 million, but not any correlation of what came in and what came out. And I just think that since this is not our money, and if we're not able to provide a report that specifically shows the money coming in and the money coming out, that I just feel the need to ensure that we have the proper documentation to be transparent about how we've gone through this process. It's been a very long, drawn-out process. Again, it started back in 2004, which does create some difficulties, but at the same time, I feel that I wouldn't be doing my due diligence if I wasn't asking for this when I still have not yet received anything to show me an exact number to match.
All right. Ms. Grant?
This is not to say that I think that there's anything incorrect happening, but I think that from my experience of dealing with accounts, I would prefer a better accounting of this process.
Ms. Grant, did you have anything to add on that, or...
No, sir, this...
All right, anything from the board? From the board, no? Open it up to public input. Is there anybody in the chambers that has anything to add to this? Anybody on Zoom? And I'm not seeing anybody on Zoom, so I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Well, I have a question. And so, how much... Where are we with staff time for this, and what is the effect of this request? This is going to be from our staff, right?
I couldn't tell you how much time it would take to do an audit, but I think the effect is...
I'm just curious, what... You know, just so we have an understanding of what the full ask is, so what...
Typically, the way audits are undertaken is that we get a quote from the audit firm that the auditor controller has selected to do our audits, and so that would be the first step, to get that quote from the audit firm.
Okay, and it's contracted out?
Yes.
Okay, that was my question.
Good question. Anything else? All right, entertain a motion.
And, Mr. Chair, I move to request for an audit on the funding source of the Collier Avenue project.
If I have a motion?
And I'm going to look back at Ms. Grant, is that appropriate motion, the funds for the Collier project?
If I understand what you're asking for with regard to an audit, I think probably you'd want to frame it a little bit more broadly than that. Funding source is limited to where the monies came from.
That's... I'm glad I turned around to ask. So, looking for an audit on the funding activity for the Collier Avenue project since its inception.
I can pass, but it'll just be a motion and a second, and then it'll be a vote, so I'll pass the... And second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Johanna, if you could please call roll.
Okay, so Commissioner Simon?
No.
Commissioner Sabatier?
Aye.
Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Commissioner Pyska?
No.
Commissioner Figaroa?
I don't know. Yeah.
Okay.
No, I don't know. I'm not too sure what... Is it for the audit?
Yes. The motion on the floor is for auditing the funds.
Yes.
Okay, and Commissioner Scott?
No.
Thank you.
That's a split vote.
It dies.
Okay, that is a split vote, and a split vote is no action.
No action, yeah. All right. Do we need a break, or do we need... Can we move on? You guys need a break?
Let's do... Oh, wait, we're not at 10 o'clock yet. Sure?
We'll do a quick break before we get on to the next item, which will be our 6.6. So we'll do five minutes. So we'll do five minutes, for sure.
Okay, Mr. Chair, and if it's all right with you, I'll invite staff that are speaking for 5.6 to go ahead and come up and get ready.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sam. Go back from our five... Well, wait one second, I think we're waiting on one supervisor.
Sorry. Sorry, Supervisor Pisca.
No problem.
Item 6.6, Public Hearing on Account and Proposed Assessment for 7268 Liberty Street in East California, 95464. And we have our Code Enforcement Department here, but wanted to ensure that, Johanna, if you could swear them in, and anybody that's here in the chambers or on Zoom, if you were party to this item on the agenda, please raise your right hand and be sworn in.
Okay. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. With that, Manager Beltramo, if you want to go ahead and take the floor, go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Marcus Beltramo. I'm the manager of the Code Enforcement Division within the Community Development Department, and I'm joined here today by Norman Joey Valdez III. He's our Code Enforcement Officer who handled this abatement. Upon completion of an abatement, we come before the board to give an account and a proposed assessment for the lien to be recorded on title for the property. In this case, a summary abatement was performed. The property in question is, or the subject property is 7268 Liberty Street in Nice, California. And as usual, we give a property description, kind of give everybody some context of what's involved and what the property, the details regarding the property. The property owners are Thurma and Irene Waller. They are deceased. The people living in the property are relatives of the persons on title. They... The title still reflects Thurma and Irene Waller. The property is owned R1, single-family residential, although in this case, there were two residential dwellings on the property. Just to give you some background, there was a fire on the property. The fire resulted in one of the dwellings burning down, and then the property continued to deteriorate from there, which Code Enforcement had to get involved.
How long ago was that fire?
I don't recall the fire. I remember the date of the fire. I do... My recollection is that in February of, I believe, 2021, the property was red-tagged as being unsafe. I don't recall the specific date of the fire, though.
Okay.
But one of the... It was a structured fire, and one of the single-family dwelling units burned down. On October 1st, 2021, Code Enforcement observed substantial amounts of trash and debris scattered over the property, property constituting a public health and safety issue to the occupants and general for overall welfare of the public. Based on the condition of the property, a summary abatement was requested from Supervisor Crandall and County Council, and they gave the go-ahead to move forward with the summary abatement. A summary abatement is those issues that are imminent to health, safety, the general welfare of the public, or pose a potential risk or danger. This is... These are photos of what the site looked like. Again, the structure there is the remains of the burnt-down, the structure that incurred the fire damage. Scattered all over the property was all sorts of debris and trash. Now, this property was not in the state when the property was initially red-tagged. For some unknown reason, and beyond my understanding, the property continued to accumulate trash and debris and resulted in the condition that you're seeing here in these pictures. And just for context, this is the front. We were not allowed to go by the gate at this point, but the trash and debris stretches all the way to the back and to the left rear of the property. On October 8th, 2021, we... Code Enforcement conducted the summary abatement, or issued the notice for the 48, summary abatement. Prior to any summary abatement, we have to provide a 48-hour period to allow the property owner, the occupants, to correct the issue. They did not take an action. Matter of fact, they signed a write-of-entry form to allow us on the property to perform the summary abatement. Between October 11th through October 14th, 2021, Code Enforcement proceeded with the summary abatement. Leonard's Hauling was the only contractor available. Usually in immediate situations, Leonard is the only one who's able to make himself available to perform these summary abatements. That's why you see his name a lot of times on these summary abatements. The summary abatement consisted of the removal of debris and trash from the property totaling approximately 39,330 pounds. 39,330 pounds, .468 pounds of trash and debris were removed from the property. So basically, that's 20 tons of trash and debris were removed that were determined to be unsafe or a health issue. Again, here's some more... These are the photos of once we got on the property and performed the summary abatement. As you can see on the left, there's a bunch of nasty debris and trash there. Again, this is in a residential neighborhood, a densely populated residential neighborhood. Again, the photo on the right is our contractor using the excavator to clean the debris and trash. On the left, you can see more photos of the summary abatement. And these are continued photos as the work in progress. You saw the pile there in the beginning, and now you see the pile no longer there, but you can still see a lot of trash and debris scattered over the property. And this is what the photo looked like after the work was complete. On October 15th, 2021, all health and safety issues were abated and removed from the property. The cost of the abatement was $5,102.03. And I do have to make a correction here. We were formed at the last second by the Assessor Recorder's Office that an additional $17 fee will be required to record the lien. This was new information to us that was provided to us recently after the submission of the documents to be posted online and for the public to view. So the administrative costs have changed. The administrative cost now is $514.76. The recommendation of staff now is to recommend the Board of Supervisors confirm the assessment in the amount of $5,617.06 and direct staff to record a notice of lien against the property. After recordation, it should be delivered to the county auditor, who shall enter the amount of the lien on the assessment rule as a special assessment. The cost of the abatement services, again, was $5,102.03, and the administrative cost $514.76 for a request to record a lien in the amount of $5,617.06. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Marcus. Any comments from the board? Supervisor Pisca?
Yeah, I just have one question about the previous red tag with the fire. Was that resolved? And what was the condition after that was resolved, if it was?
I'm sorry, what was the first part of the question?
Well, I guess this trash nuisance became a problem after the fire, right?
To my knowledge, there was a fire, and then, to my knowledge, the situation evolved where there was just fire damage, and then the trash and debris started to accumulate over time between, I believe it was February of 2021 to October 2021.
Right.
When Code Enforcement learned of the issues and the condition of the property, at that time, we had to get involved and immediately take care of the issue. We were unaware that the property was accumulating such trash and debris along the way. So only in October did we become aware of the degree of the gravity of the situation.
So after a structured fire, and you said it was red-tagged after the fire, but before the garbage started accumulating?
Yes.
Okay, and was that red tag resolved?
The red tag... Well, the red tag was resolved by the occupants of the property. They came in and got a demolition permit and performed their own self-demolition, I guess you would call it. They did not hire a professional contractor. I believe that would aid or add to the trash and debris that accumulated on the property, but a lot of that was trash that's not related to a demolition.
Right. So we have a situation where there's fire debris, and then people see that, and so, you know, just keep throwing more and more on it. So I'm just wondering how we can improve that process after there's a structure of fire and have a standard of what a property needs to be cleaned up to so that we don't have this type of problem? Because if it was cleaned up in a beautiful way, this wouldn't have happened. So just going forward, how can we improve our processes with that?
So this is an issue that's been taken under review. There are several properties that I have not gone, that have gone unaddressed and not have been dealt with in a timely manner. Code Enforcement, along with the new building official and the new director, have implemented a program to account for these and not to let them persist as they have, because as these situations persist, they tend to fester.
Yes.
And become bigger problems. Right now, we're kind of dealing with the backlog, I guess you would say, and addressing that there's one in Middletown that's gone on for a while that we look to cure, and there's no responsible parties to take care of it. But we have had conversations about this. We need to reach out to our local fire entities and Cal Fire, and that as soon as a structured fire is resolved, any investigation is finalized and complete, that they need to contact us so that we can do our part in the process and clear it up, as far as finding the responsible persons involved, seeing if they have property insurance, if they can clean up the mess, and then determining the degree of the health and safety issues, and if the county does need to get involved. But this is an issue in the past. We have looking to put in internal controls and measures so that this does not become an issue going forward, and hopefully we will do better in the future with dealing with these. But unfortunately, right now, it is an issue that needs to be addressed, and I believe we have a plan and strategy in place. But again, we do need to reach out to our local fire entities, and they need to be put on notice that when these things are complete, they need to let us know so we can do our part.
Yep, I appreciate that, because we know that debris breeds debris, and, you know, we've got to get on top of these things before they start. And I know that you've got a ton on your plate. I really appreciate you taking this on and also looking strategically at how we can fix this problem for the future. So thank you.
And my chief concern usually with these properties, when I come across them, is that nobody needs to live next to these kind of situations. A burnt-down house has health and safety implications.
Yes, it does.
For a neighborhood in whole, so I don't think anyone needs or appreciates living next to or nearby adjacent to such a situation.
Thank you.
I think it also revolves around the owners. You said that they were deceased, right?
That's the information. So the occupants that are in the property currently are relatives, and they gave us information they were deceased. There's also a nearby relative who was been involved in the process, and she also confirmed that the relatives, or the people on title, are deceased, and now there's a family dispute of who controls the property.
That seems to be one of the biggest issues in many of these cases, but thank you for getting to the bottom of it. You have more?
Oh, I'm done, thanks.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, I just have a quick question, since it kind of came up, and I disagree with it. I'm wondering if Ms. Grant can speak on this $17 addition? I'd hate to add more on a lien than necessary, because I have a law here in front of me that says the county recorder shall collect a fee from any liener other than a government entity. So I'm just, and I'm looking at Code 27387. And in a previous code, in 27383, it states that no fees shall be applied to government entities. So I'm just kind of curious why the sudden change, and somewhat uncomfortable without, by just changing it on the fly. Not sure if... I don't know how I feel about that. Just kind of curious.
Ms. Grant.
I haven't actually looked at the fee, and even though it's just $17, I'd hate to opine without being able to actually read the sections. If you want to put this over for just a little bit, I can look at it and get back to you, but I don't want to guess as I sit here.
That's my only problem with this. Other than that, I appreciate the fact that it got cleaned up. Absolutely a nuisance, but if somebody's not willing to clean up their property, adding more on top of something that I don't think we need to add on to, I know it's little, it just creates more of a situation where we have unpaid stuff.
Supervisor Scott?
And I guess my question would be, would that $17 really be charged to us? It's being put on the lien of the lien holder. It's being put on them, correct? Or... I mean, that's the way I look at it. We're not being charged the fee.
We're the ones recording the lien.
Marcus, you had something you wanted to add?
Yeah, the $17 in question is a monetary amount that our department will pay the Assessor Recorder's Office to record the lien. I think it's fair to have input from the Assessor Recorder's Office, as they're the ones that have made this interpretation and brought it to our attention. In the past, the document was not charged to be recorded. This was new information brought to us recently.
Ms. Grant.
Mr. Chair, yeah, I can tell you, the Assessor Recorder has determined that certain recordations are now required to be paid by local governments. So that is a fee incurred, and in that case, it can be the subject of this lien. So it's... According to the Assessor's Office, for these fees, liens are generally not considered permissive. The fee for this would be mandatory to be paid by the county. And the Assessor's Office has done, I believe, I don't know if it was a resolution or some kind of a policy document, creating that change.
All right. All right, with that, I'll open it up for public input. Don't see any. Don't see any in the Zoom, and so I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve and confirm the assessment of $5,617.06 and direct staff to record the notice of special assessment lien against the property. The cost of a summary abatement service charge was $5,102.03 from Leonard's Hauling, and $514.76 total being 561706.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, for your work on Code Enforcement. Move on to our next item. Our 6.7, Public Hearing, Discussion and Consideration of Appeal, AB 21-05, A Planning Commission Approval of Major Use Permit, 1936 NIS-MND, which is Initial Study in Mitigated Negative Declaration, 19-56, Lake Vista Farms LLC, Clear Lake, APN 010-053-01, and 010-053-02. And before we get started, when we get to public input, I'm going to ask that we keep our comments to two minutes, if at all possible, in case... Because from what I'm gathering, there's going to be comments on this and many others on our agenda that are going to be pretty lengthy, so if we can hold those to two minutes, that'd be greatly appreciated. Ms. Grant?
And Mr. Chair, certainly the comment limitation does not apply to the appellant, the property owners, or the department. But just for clarification, and as I'm sure you're aware, that all witnesses will be sworn in here before you begin, and normally, the department will present its case first.
Okay. And so should I swear them in now?
I would swear in all witnesses.
Okay. All right, so if we can get everyone sworn in, I think... What's that? You didn't hear that? So what we're doing is, we're about ready to swear in testimony of the folks that are in this appeal.
Except for attorneys.
What's that?
Except for the attorneys.
Yeah, except for the attorneys, of course. All right. And so... Yeah, the department as well needs to swear in. And so Johanna usually does this. There she is.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. And with that, we will go ahead and give this, the floor to Ms. Darby. Ms. Darby, thank you for coming to the board meeting.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, or good morning, I'm not sure where I am right now, but good morning, everyone. This particular item actually is going to be presented by Michael McGinnis, our principal planner with the community development. our principal planner with the Community Development Department. So I will turn it over to Michael from this point.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm actually waiting for my PowerPoint to be uploaded.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
She's uploading it now.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Supervisors. I've had a chance to meet a few of you relatively new to the county, and I look forward to meeting you individually. Or to avoid the Brown Act, of course. My name is Mike McGinnis. I'm the principal planner for the Community Development Department here in the County of Lake. I'm here to provide a general overview of Appeal AB 21-05, major use permit 1936, initial study 19-56. The applicant's Lake Vista Farms LLC. The property owners are Brian Pensick and Garrett Burdick, and the appellant is David Hughes. My goal, I think, this morning is to provide a general overview of the project proposal, the staff's analysis of the environmental effects of the project, the appeal, and then to make a recommendation to the board based on staff's analysis. Project is accessed by a gravel driveway from the Ogulon Canyon Road through an existing security gate. The pre-existing agriculture activity has covered over 18 acres of the site area. Other land uses on the project site include residential timberland grazing, among others. Okay. The history of the site and the parcel. It was a former hops farm operated as a hops Meister Farms and cultivated approximately 13.6 acres of hops beginning in around 2009. The combined parcel area is approximately 302.4 acres and is within the boundary of the Shore Alliance Community Area Plan and also within the city of Clear Lake's sphere of influence and city limits. As you probably know, cannabis cultivation is prohibited within 1,000 feet of a city's sphere of influence unless the applicant can provide a letter of support from the city of Clear Lake. A letter of support from the city of Clear Lake was issued in February 24th on 2020. And following soon after that, an early activation was approved on February 28th, 2020 by the county zoning administrator. The current project includes 15 A-type 3 outdoor licenses totaling 816,750 square feet of cultivation, or 18.75 acres, and 653,400 square feet of total canopy, or 15 acres of five different sites here in the table listed as A, B, C, D, and E. Sites A through D would include temporary 20 feet by 100 feet, or 2,000 square feet hoop houses that are of simple construction that do not require lighting. It also includes portable toilets, trash enclosures, vegetation waste storage areas, 2,500 gallon water storage tanks at five cultivation areas, Aconex shipping containers, and eight feet by eight feet storage sheds or similar for storage. The area also proposes to include 1.5 acres of onsite nursery within an existing barn and shade structures, one renovated 10 feet by 30 feet shipping container in-house, security equipment and camera monitors, and a six-foot tall security wire fencing. It is important to note that soon after the violation, soon after the EA was noted, granted, violation of EA 20-22 resulted in the construction of hoop houses onsite A and the grading of 56,604 square feet of site B. The code enforcement division of the County of Lake, CDD, cited the lessy with a notice of violation and a stop worker work order on May 14th, 2020. The applicant coordinated with staff to identify and implement corrective actions, including the removal of the hoop houses, preparation of an engineered grading plan, stabilization of illegally graded area, and installation of stormwater management controls to prevent erosion from the graded site. These plans and associated actions to mitigate the violations were cleared by the CDD on August 8th, 2021. No cultivation activities have occurred at the project site since the revocation of the early activation. There have been a number of plans submitted to support the proposed action, including a project description, site plans, property management plan, biological report, cultural resources report, site management plan, supplemental and supporting documentation, site photos and mapping, tree and vegetation plan, grading plans, hydrological report, the required drought management plan, and well reports. The SEQA guidelines for Appendix G were analyzed by staff for initial study 19-56. That included an analysis of aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hydrology and water quality, noise, transportation, tribal cultural resources, utilities and service systems. Based on that analysis, mitigation measures were introduced to avoid and reduce the adverse impacts to less than significant for these particular constraints. The biological assessment, which was prepared by Natural Investigations Company for the project, noted that there were no special status species or critical habitats on the site. They also included an erosion control measures and BMPs to control erosion and sedimentation during construction and operation for the development site plans and within the property management plan. Their project analysis by staff focused on three major elements, the county general plan conformance and the Shore Alliance Communities Area Plan, the city of Clear Lake's sphere of influence, the city limits, and the county zoning ordinance conformance. One issue in particular was water use and demand and recharge of the basin. And in the comparison of the previous use, agricultural use of the property versus the proposed action by the Lake Vista Farms LLC, there's a net yearly demand of a decrease per acre feet of 18.7. So that, that change in use from the hops farm to the cannabis cultivation would result in a reduction in water use. These are the projections for water supply and demand for the five areas located on the site. It shows that the well yield is sufficient to meet the demand, and the recharge rate is satisfactory. In terms of a water summary for the site, the demand is minus 45,000 gallons per day on, or 24.9 acre feet per year. The net demand is minus 18.7 acre feet per year because Lake Vista Farms is replacing an agricultural project with much higher water demand. The total well capacity is five wells or 720 GPM, or 1,036,800 gallons per day. Demand is only 4.3% of the project well's capacity. The nearest well is over 1,300 feet away, so no impact to a drought down or adjacent wells is expected. Recharge of the project parcel exceeds the demand for both average and dry years, and the project's demand is 1.8% of the Burns Valley groundwater basin usable storage capacity. For SEQA guidelines, staff also conducted a cumulative impact analysis. I think it's important to recognize that if you're considering the constraints of a particular site, it's not just one particular constraint, but the, perhaps the synergies between constraints, whether it's water use, energy, noise, air pollution, odor, habitat removal. The synergy between those particular constraints onsite need to be assessed in the cumulative impact analysis. In addition, per SEQA guidelines, cumulative impact assessment should consider not just the particular site proposal and the development of that site, but also associated sites from existing cannabis or agriculture or vineyard activities or residential water use. The cumulative impact assessment should consider existing and foreseeable projects associated with perhaps a sub-basin or a watershed. Staff conducted that cumulative impact analysis. And for water use, a hydrological analysis was submitted that evaluated cumulative impacts of all area wells. No adverse impacts from this project to overall area wells was found. Terms of pesticide use, the applicant indicates that only biorational pesticides will be used. This is consistent with state regulations and rigid testing of cannabis plants that the state undertakes for quality assurance. That particular issue is associated with residue on cannabis. And as you may be aware of, the only type of pesticide that can be used on cannabis are biorational in nature, not organic, but biorational. Terms of air pollution, air filtration systems required in all buildings, diesel generators are prohibited, burning cannabis plant material onsite is prohibited, dust mitigation is required during and after construction. Water pollution, erosion control measures are required through BMPs or best management practices. Site disturbance out of season is prohibited. Terms of energy use, no new power is needed. Existing power onsite is adequate for the project. No grid issues at this location or vicinity. In terms of land coverage or change in land coverage, it'll affect essentially 35 acres of the 504-acre site. There are no other permitted cultivation sites in proximity to this project. However, overall area has a number of traditional farms, orchards, and vineyards, all which had to modify their sites to enable the farming to occur. Terms of project analysis, Article 51 dot point dot 14, use permit findings for approval. Six findings must be met in Article 51.4, and three findings must be met in Article 27 point 11 at. Neighbors within 720 feet, 25 feet were notified of this proposal. Staff received adverse comments on the project application and SEQA analysis related to the environmental review of the water use and groundwater charge. In terms of the project analysis for Article 51 dot 4, use permit findings for approval, that the use will not be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of the neighborhood, that the site is adequate in size, shape, location, and physical characteristics to accommodate the type of use and level of development proposed, that the streets, highways, and pedestrian facilities are reasonably adequate to safely accommodate the specific project. Four, that there are adequate public or private services, including but not limited to fire protection, water supply, sewage disposal, and police protection to serve the project. Five, that the project is in conformance with the applicable provisions and policies of this code, the general plan, and any proposed zoning or land use plan. And six, that no violation of Chapters 5, 17, 21, 23, or 26 of the Lake County Code currently exists on the site. To further expand on project analysis, Article 27 dot 11 at cannabis findings for approval. The use complies with development standards in Article 27. The applicant is qualified to make the application. Three, the application complies with the qualifications for a permit found in Article 27. On November 18th, 2021, the use, the use permit was approved by the Lake County Planning Commission with conditions of approval. An Appeal AB 21-05 to the Board of Supervisors was filed by the appellant on November 24th, 2021. A note on the appeal as a general summary. You'll also find the appeal in the exhibit to the board. The appellant maintains, I think, four main points that are worth summarizing. The first is the development of existing grape vineyards and additional approved cannabis operations contribute to biological impacts associated with water demand, water use, and the capacity of the groundwater system to recharge. The second main point from the appellant is that the proposed water use for the cultivation of cannabis in said property would have cumulative impacts on water demand, water use, and capacity of the groundwater system to recharge. Third point by the appellant is the capacity of the groundwater to store and recharge water during the current drought remains unaddressed in the environmental review. And the fourth main point by the appellant is the site areas within the county's required 1,000-foot setback from the city of Clear Lake's sphere of influence and city's limits. In terms of the general appellant's main issues related to water, the Burns Valley existing water demand, in terms of vineyards, the applicant provided additional information related to the application and provides a summary of the total existing demand from residential orchards and vineyards in the basin. The total existing demand is roughly 595 acre feet per year for these different uses. In terms of the Burns Valley demand for cannabis projects and the potential for future cultivation, again, to reflect the requirements under SEQA for cumulative impact assessment, the applicant has provided additional supplementary information, which are, which is also available as an exhibit to the board that summarizes the potential demand for future cannabis at about 88.3 acre feet per year within the basin. Based on the analysis and the material submitted by the applicant, the staffer recommends that the Board of Supervisors deny the Appeal AB 21-05, uphold the Planning Commission's decision to approve the use permit, UP 13-36, and adopt initial study mitigated negative declaration 19-56.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Mary, did you have anything to add?
No, I don't at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Not yet.
No? All right, so what I'll do is I'll open it up for public input? Or no?
The appellant.
The appellant, sorry. Appellant, if you are in the chambers or on Zoom, and you have anything to add to the, or to bring forward, please come to the microphone or unmute yourself on Zoom. Not seeing anybody.
Mr. Chair, if the appellant is not here, you may want to inquire of staff as to the process for notifying them of the appeal. If, if staff notified them.
Yes, well, it's.
Normally, the appellant comes.
Yeah. So is there any, when was it noticed for the appellant?
Yes, staff did notify the appellant.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, so who?
Mr. McGinnis stated that they were, they were notified.
Right, I was, as to the process. In other words, were they?
So what, yeah, what process was taken to notify the appellant?
The legal, under the legal guidelines, a notice of the hearing, a notice of the action.
Okay.
Was mailed in the US mail, was sent via email, was?
Yeah.
That's the process I'm following.
By US mail.
US mail, okay.
All right. And as the CEO just pointed out to me, it could be a representative of appellant is here today who wants to speak to this?
Is there a representative for the appellant present?
Well, it's staff's testimony that the appellant was duly noticed. And your board can certainly receive testimony from the project applicant at this point, and then open it up for comment.
All right. So a project applicant, if you are present and you'd like to state something, please come to the microphone. come to the microphone. And Mr. Knoll, I want to hold you to the two minutes, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, members of the board and staff and those in attendance here today. My name is Richard Knoll. I'm a land use planning consultant in Lakeport, and I am representing Lake Vista Farms LLC. I'd like to introduce our team who are all here this morning, and we also have some folks on the Zoom in the digital world out there. But let me first introduce Angie Dodd, who is here from North Point Consulting Group out of Arcata. She is going to be making a presentation concerning groundwater hydrology, which is one of the central points of the appeal. We also have attorney Brad Johnson in the Zoom room. I want to introduce Mike Mittel, also assisting on some of the consulting. And then owners Brian Pensak, Garrett Berdick, and Kim Gardner are all here this morning. So we have a number of documents that have been presented to staff and hopefully have been provided to the board. I also have a PowerPoint presentation, but I'm not sure if it is going to be necessary to present that. Much of the information is also already been provided by staff. We thank you for that.
It was also included in our packet, so we.
Well, yeah, the PowerPoint that I was going to make, and I'd like to keep it in reserve in the event that there are any questions and I can refer to it. I have a thumb drive with my complete file for this project. Again, if there are any questions or a need to look at something, we can refer to that. But I do want to indicate that Angie Dodd will, I think, go through her presentation. So with that, I'd like to introduce Angie again and ask her to come on up. And the last thing I'd like to request of the board is the ability to respond to any questions or comments or issues that are raised during the public input phase. So if that's possible, I'd like to be able to do that, so. Thank you.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors and Chair. My name is Angie Dodd. I'm with North Point Consulting Group. I'm not sure I need to go through my presentation again. Michael covered quite a bit of what I would cover. I do have some additional information. There's quite detailed information in the hydrology report, and then the addendum to the hydrology report regarding the recharge in the basin, the demand in the basin, and how there's sufficient recharge and storage to meet the demand, including existing and potential future demand. The way that I estimated potential future demand was based on the projects that I could see are currently being processed in that groundwater basin cannabis projects, as well as potential future projects based on land use within the city limits and what they could potentially approve, and then what the county could approve in the current zoning, and then what's realistic in terms of topography, floodplain setbacks and all of that. So that's where the potential future demand came. And based on that future demand, as you can see in the presentation that's submitted with the materials and with what Michael said, there's sufficient recharge and storage in the basin to meet existing and future demand. With respect to the project itself, which talking about cumulative impacts, it is a former hops farm that was 13.6 acres of harps, harps of hops. The demand for hops is almost double the demand for cannabis. Doing research on hops, they have a broader leaf area and require more moisture. So in terms of a delta of water use, the use for the cannabis is actually less than what would have been used for the cultivation of the hops. So instead of belaboring every, all the materials that were given, I have some additional data. Richard has handouts to give this information, but drought is of a huge concern all throughout California, so I wanted to discuss what's been going on recently in terms of precipitation in Lake County, what that means with respect to this project, which is what we're discussing today. And just looking at the National Climate Data Center for precipitation, the closest gauge is Clear Lake Oaks. And if you look at a hydrologic year, which is from October to September, the 2021 hydrologic year had a total precipitation of 9.3 inches. And then if you look at the hydrologic year to date, which would be from October of last year till now, at the end of last year, there was quite a bit of precipitation, little bit and very little in January and February, which is the most recent data I have. But as of December, there was just under 14 inches of precipitation. And if you look at the recharge calculations for this project, it was based on a minimum precipitation of a dry record of 6.5 inches and then an average annual of more than that. And there was sufficient recharge, even with 6.5 inches of precipitation, to meet more than the demand of this project, quite above the demand of this project. So the recharge to date is actually more than what was provided in the recharge hydrologic analysis. And then second, I encouraged the applicants to conduct some additional well tests just to see how their wells are reacting because we're in such a severe drought. And what was shown in these well tests, I had a couple of typos, so I wrote on there. The drawdown, sorry, the initial or static water level at the beginning of the test was very similar to when the wells were drilled, showing that there hasn't been a lot of change over the years. And this represents wells that were drilled in 2011, 2020, and 2004 at various times of the year. And these tests were done at the end of January, beginning of February. In addition, there's, the well yields were limited by the pump that the well driller or well test company had used, but there's sufficient yield. We haven't really seen a drop in capacity or a drop in static water level. And one of the things I recommend on almost every project that I work on in doing the hydrologic study and drought management plan is, and it's also required in county ordinance, is monitoring. And if you're monitoring your water level in your wells at the spring, at the end of spring recharge, and then at the end of your cultivation season or at the end of the hydrologic year, you're really getting that level change of the drop in your water table versus the recharge at the end of the, or sorry, at the beginning of the season, and how your cultivation project or how your aquifer is reacting to that recharge. And this data is showing that up in the upper basin, which is outside of the alluvial aquifer, that you are getting quite a bit of recharge. And then lastly, in the lower part of the basin, it's a deep well below the alluvial aquifer, the California State Monitoring Program does have a groundwater well. And I called the Lake County, or I actually had one of my staff members call the Lake County Department of Water Resources and get the most recent elevation data on that well, which you'll see on the second page. And you can definitely see, I have it circled there, the effects of the drought. And in 2020, you see quite a drop in the table at the, in October 2020, you see similar with less recharge in 2021, which we had very little precipitation in 2021. And then the last dot that circled red is the recharge, sorry, the elevation recorded in March, on March 29th, 2022, which shows that the aquifer was able to recover to a good extent after that rainfall that occurred at the end of the year. So I'm here to answer any questions, but I think I've demonstrated on multiple levels that this project has sufficient water. My technical studies have demonstrated that it's not impacting groundwater wells in the alluvial aquifer because we're much deeper than that. And so those are more affected by drought, by the water levels in the lake, and that cumulatively, this project has sufficient water, would not impact surrounding groundwater wells. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
So, hello. Just wanted to let the board know that I have not responded because I've been through this rodeo before, but I do have a text from the appellant saying that they never received a letter stating that this meeting was occurring today. I don't know what to do with that. I don't want to respond at this moment in time. And just kind of curious about if there's any more than just the information that we've been provided to state that the appellant, as well as the neighbors, have been told. I just wanted to at least check in.
Proof of service?
Yeah, something of a proof of service. So did we, we sent it via mail and it wasn't, was it given, was it given in, what do they call that?
Registered?
Registered, yeah, certified mail? No, no, it was just mailed. Okay. What we'll do is we will take a quick break briefly and come back to this in about five minutes. Five minutes, good enough? Five minutes? So, so yes. All right. 10:51 is when we'll come back. We'll go ahead and call the meeting back to order, come back from our short break. And so we just have indication that the appellant claims that he's not been notified. So I wanted to ask Mr. McGinnis, you know what date that the notification was sent? Or if there's, what? Johanna's looking that up.
So the legal notice was sent on March 22nd, the same day that we sent the legal notice to the record be, to be published on March 29th. So they, we sent it to everybody that we received from planning on March 22nd.
Thank you, Johanna. And Ms. Grant?
And just specifically that that included David Hughes, the appellant.
And, and the address? Can, can we see the list? Can we look at the list that CDD provided the clerk of the board?
I don't have the list offhand. Yeah.
They provided labels, yeah.
Yeah, we have labels, but they were probably on the attachment, right?
They, um, gentleman did the amount.
Oh, okay. Was it sent, well, I know that the appeal states PO Box 3490. Was that the same place it was sent or?
I don't remember.
Okay.
No. We'll have to get that information.
Ms. Darby?
So I was going to say that the appellant's address is PO Box 3490, Clear Lake, California 95422, and that's what the label was prepared for.
Okay. Ms. Grant?
I was just going to note that it's my understanding that the appellant has requested that your board continue this, so.
Right. And that's, that was going to be my next thing after I asked. So the appellant has asked that, board, so I just wanted to notify you of that. I see that, Mr. Knoll, did you have something you'd like to add?
Yeah, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. With all due respect to the appellant, what you are witnessing here is actually something we've seen before on a project that was appealed in the, in the city of Clear Lake. And there were multiple requests for continuation. And I guess I would just like to remind the board that based on our understanding that there has been legal notice given by the county in accordance with the California Government Code, and that we feel that the appellant, having made contact with the county, is fully aware of this hearing. And it does not make sense to us that the board would, you know, take action to continue a matter that we are here on today, that the appellant had full opportunity and, and, you know, really should have been here.
Okay.
And has an opportunity to, to, you know, present whatever information via, via Zoom. And we just hope the board will take action today to decide this appeal. It's been three years that we've been in this process, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knoll. With that, I'll close public input, bring it back to the board, so that that way we can decide how we're going to move forward. There is a request of continuance and then also the.
Mr. Chair, I wanted to call to your attention, there's a hand up in the Zoom room.
Oh, yes.
You have closed.
Donna Mckewitz?
Mckewitz?
Okay, well, I closed it, but I'll open it back up. Donna, if you can unmute, you have two minutes.
Good morning, and thank you for letting me speak. I was the person, oh, this is Donna Mckewitz from Redmond Audubon. I was the person that just sent a text and phone David Hughes because I was concerned that maybe something had happened, wondering why he was not in the courtroom. And since no one else is speaking on this, I'd just like to bring attention to the biological study that was done in 2019 on June 11th.
Ma'am, ma'am.
If you're looking to find.
Ma'am, no, we can, you can stop there.
You might want to not do it in June, but do a.
Okay.
And also the water reports were from 2004, 2006, 2011. It would be nice to see if well studies could be done, like in the.
We can silence her, Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, she hasn't testified, so we can't take that. I do see another hand up, and I'd open it up for Ms. Mckewitz. So Mr. Johnson, if you'd like to unmute yourself.
Hi, good, good morning, Board of Supervisors. I appreciate you allowing me to speak. I just would like to thank Ms. Grant for what she has clarified on the, kind of the rules here. I do agree with everything she said, that the process has been followed. But also, you know, if it's, if the board is so inclined to proceed with the hearing, if, if Mr. Hughes is available by text, the board might actually inquire whether he can make an appearance and, and present today, now that he is aware that the hearing is proceeding. So I just wanted to offer that to the board as well.
Thank you. And that was basically stated by Mr. Knoll, too. Thank you for that. I do see another phone, 4847, they have their hand up. This will be the last one that I take before we come back. And if you haven't been sworn in on this item, then we're going to have to probably cut it short. Actually, that person put their hand down, so it looks like we're, we're done with that. So we'll close public input, bring it back to the board, and I wanted to see if the request for continuance or if we were going to move forward, what action shall we take from there? And Ms. Grant, did you have any more?
I, I just wanted to remind the board that the choice is yours here. You are certainly allowed to grant a continuance from an appellant who's asking for one if, if that's the determination of your board. If you make a determine that determination that timely and adequate legal notice was properly given, you can certainly move forward if you choose to do that instead.
Vice Chair Scott?
I believe the timely and adequate notice has been given, and I think we need to move forward today.
With that, is there any action to, Ms., Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Vice Chair Scott, too, that from what I understand and what's been reported today, that notice was given, given an opportunity, I think, prepared to move forward, so those are my comments.
Thank you, Supervisor Simon.
I agree.
Okay. With that, would, would anybody like to entertain a motion?
I have questions regarding the project, if we're ready to move on to discuss the project.
Then we'll go back to, okay, so.
So, Mr. Chair, perhaps you could give staff an opportunity to see if we can, I was just provided Mr. Hughes' cell phone number, can see if I can get him in Zoom?
How much time do you think that'll take? I can probably, we could probably do something in the middle of five minutes?
There's a appointment.
Yeah. Yeah, let's go to that. So while we're waiting for that, we'll put this on pause just for one second and take action on a non-timed item briefly. We have 7.3 consideration of the following advisory boards. Lucerne Area Town Hall, and that's a person, let me see if I can pull this up here. And the application is for Danielle Santo Pietro. And so, yeah. Any comments, questions, concerns? No? Any, so I'll open up for public input. I don't see anybody in the chambers, anybody online. I don't see any hands up. Bring it back to the board for action.
And, Mr. Chair, if you're okay with my approving your appointment to Lucerne Town Hall, I will go ahead and make a motion to approve Danielle Santo Pietro.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 7.3 is finished. And it looks like we're right back to, and we'll go back to our paused item, 6.7.
So, Mr. Hughes is going to join by Zoom if you'll give me just a couple minutes to get the Zoom link to him?
And so, Ms. Grant, so I closed public input, so I'll probably need to reopen it, considering we're going to be going forward with more testimony and more discussion on this item, correct?
Oh, yes. I assumed you just closed public input as to the continuance issue.
Right, the continuance issue. So as for the appeal, we will be reopening that when the time comes.
That's right. And the appellant, of course, will still have the opportunity to present, notwithstanding any time limit
Right.
as the department and the developer, project owner has done.
Okay.
Do calendars?
We can do calendars. Do you, we can do calendars if that's amenable to the rest of the board. Who would like to start? Who's ready? You ready?
I'm ready. I can start.
Vice Chair Scott, go ahead.
Tomorrow I have the Ag Advisory Committee meeting at 10 o'clock, and then Agenda Review at 3:00. I might be a little late to that because I have a doctor's appointment right before that. And then I will be attending the Spring Social for the Kelseyville Women in Agriculture at 5:30 in Kelseyville tomorrow. 9:00 on the 14th, Resilient Lake County at, I also have a 9:00, the HCAH Advisory Board, so I'll be toggling back and forth through that. And then the JPA meeting at 10:00. And at 3:00 PM, the Mental Health Advisory Board, that goes till 5:00. On Monday, I will be attending Juan Ortega's church service, and then back here on Tuesday.
All right. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, board meeting, looks like all day today. And then I have a meeting with Pugini tomorrow afternoon. Thursday, I have the Milltown Area Town Hall. Friday, Planning Meeting. This weekend, obviously, is, I got it right, is Easter on Sunday, so we'll be enjoying that. And then Monday, have the Risk Reduction Authority meeting, meeting with Carol in the morning, and then back here on Tuesday for the meeting on the 19th.
All right. Supervisor Pesca?
Tomorrow morning, I have the, the Ag Advisory Committee meeting in the morning, and then I will be at the California Women in Ag Social in the evening. Thursday morning, I have Fire Safety Council, then I have my meeting with Pugini in the afternoon. And then the 15th, Friday, I have my weekly planning meeting with the Home Hardening Group, and then I will not be here next week for spring break.
All right. Thank you, Supervisor Pesca. Supervisor Sabatier?
I'll keep it brief. With the city of Clear Lake, I have a road committee meeting. They're looking to get a $10 or $12 million loan to do a whole bunch of roads all at once, rather than doing year by year. Going to join our Conacti Unified School District Board meeting later that evening. Have a North Coast EMS JPA meeting on Thursday. Meeting with the Real Estate Association on Friday, and then just getting prepared for our meeting on Monday.
All right.
Lot of stuff in between.
All right. So following this meeting, if we get out of here by that time, I'll, I'm going to go to the Upper Lake Community Council meeting. That's at 5:30 in Upper Lake. Tomorrow, there is a listening session for drought executive order, Action 9 for well permitting, that was invited from RCRC. So I'll be attending that with Agenda Review at 3:00 PM with CAO Hutchinson. Thursday, we'll be doing a review on the North Shore with the fire departments on a specific project he's working on. The Lucerne Area Town Hall will be in the evening at 6:00 PM. This weekend, of course, just attending as many Easter parties on the North Shore that I can, or events, to make sure that, you know, I don't, I don't want to wear the bunny outfit, but I'll attend. And then on Monday, let's see, I know I have something else here. CAO meeting, and then, yeah, no, that's then back here for the Board of Supervisors on, no, I'm sorry, I'm waiting with Water Resources, that's what I knew. I'm waiting with them at 3:00 PM on Monday. So, and then back to the board here on Tuesday. So with that, the calendars have been conducted. Are we ready for, to come back to 6.7?
Yes, and Mr. Hughes is in the Zoom now?
Mr. Hughes, can you hear me? This is Chair Crandall.
He needs to unmute.
Yes, if you can unmute your microphone. He's working on it, I know that. There we go.
Hello?
Hi.
Yep, you're there.
Hi.
All right, Mr. Hughes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. So I'm on now.
Can we do the swearing in again?
Yes. Mr. Hughes, we're going to need to swear you in briefly before we go ahead and take your testimony in regards to this appeal. And so Johanna here will be conducting that with you.
Thank you.
And if anybody else in the room would desire to be sworn in, now's the time.
Okay. With your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you, God.
I do.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Johanna. Mr. Hughes, do you, everybody has been able to give their presentation so far on this. Staff has done so, and so has the, so has the party that is conducting the permit. So if there's anything you'd like to add or would like to present, now's your opportunity.
Okay, I guess, first of all, we were appealing on, on two issues, the first being water, our concerns for water in the Burns Valley Basin, and the second was growing of marijuana within 100 feet or so of the city limits. I, I guess I need to, it, it's going to be hard for me to give a presentation because I knew nothing about this hearing. I did not receive anything in the mail. I did not receive anything via email, text, or anything else. So I'm in my vehicle, and I get a call from Mr. Flora asking me if I knew about the hearing. I did not. We, as a, as a neighborhood, we've got about 35 neighbors in, in the Burns Valley area below this project that have banded together. We, we put together $5,000 to have an engineering report done by EBA Engineering. I received that report on April 8. I sent it out to all of the neighborhood for comments back, and I'm still waiting for the comments to come back as, as the neighborhood reviews it. Once I got the comments back, I was going to contact staff and find out where I send this and see if I could find out when our hearing might be. So I've been kind of caught unaware. I have a hydrology report here, based on a review of the, the applicant's hydrology reports that were done. And again, I wanted to speak on the issue of, of growing within 1,000 feet of the city limits. There was already a, there, there, there used to be a, a kennel on Auguline Canyon Road adjacent to 2050 Auguline Canyon, and she had obvious concerns about a grow being that close to her property. She did check with the veterinarian, and what the vet basically told her was, from a health standpoint, it probably would not affect the animals. From an odor standpoint, when marijuana is emitting odors, it could get in the coats of the animals. Customers could smell the marijuana when they drive up to pick up their animal or deliver their animal, and she felt that would and could adversely impact her business. That kennel was probably there for 25 or 30 years. Since that time, the, the property's been purchased, I believe, by affiliated cannabis persons. And so the kennel's no longer there. So I wanted, we wanted to, as a neighborhood, argue the, the growing within 1,000 feet. And then I, I need the opportunity to, to send our, our hydrology review to staff so that they can review it. And, and again, our concern is, not only do we have a drought, but we feel there's a direct correlation between water usage upstream from us and impacting our, our water in the, in the Burns Valley Basin. Again, I, I'm not prepared to make a presentation, but my understanding is the Burns Valley Basin water is recharged through rainwater. And to us, if rainwater hits the surface and then drains into the basin, it drains into our aquifer. Most of the wells in, in the Burns Valley Basin are anywhere from 50 to maybe 75 feet. Mine is about 65. And the basin, or the aquifer below that pumps a lot more water, but we feel if, if rainwater is what recharges the basin, it must flow into our aquifer, and then from our aquifer into the lower aquifer. And if they're using water, it could affect the, the amount of water our aquifer has available. And that's what we were trying to, to show a little bit of with our hydrology review that we had done. Again, I have it sitting here on my desk, but it hasn't been sent to anybody except the neighbors for comment. So that's why I was hoping I could get some kind of a continuance. I, I'm not sure, you know, what the applicant has in mind. I know we appealed, I believe this applicant was also on 2185 Auguline Canyon, which is within the city limits. We appealed that one. We did not win that appeal, but we also didn't have a professional hydrologist, hydrogeologist working for us at that time. And the day after, basically, the city granted the applicant, denied our appeal, the property's been put on the market for sale. So, you know, I don't know what he has in mind for 2050 Auguline Canyon, but we'd like the opportunity to send our, our engineering hydrologist report and, and again, have an opportunity to get organized and argue the, the growing, the growing within the 1,000 feet of the city limits.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
And, and let me, again, I want to emphasize, I, I have not received a thing about this hearing, by email, by registered mail, by any mail. So I, I don't know where the notice was sent to me, but I, I have not received it. I certainly would have been there had I known.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hughes.
I'd like to, I'd like to add one more thing.
Go for it.
Real quick. We, during the planning commission he, hearing, there were four commissioners present, so there wasn't a fifth to be a tiebreaker. And while the planning commission was deliberating, one of the commissioners actually mentioned changing his vote so that it would not end in a tie. He said he would hate to see a tie vote, basically deny the project. So he was going to change his vote. So it turned out to be a three to one vote. And I was always puzzled as to why he would change his vote, because I feel like he was supporting our side, but didn't want to see it end in a tie. So I, you know, I don't know what his thinking was, but I thought that was interesting that he would make a comment like that and then vote to allow the, allow the project to proceed.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hughes. It's noted, I, I can't speak as to why the commissioner would do that, but, but I read the minutes as well and seen, I think that was stated as well. So with that, is there any other, any questions for Mr. Hughes from the board? Supervisor Sabatier?
I was going to ask if we can double check on the address.
Yes, Mr. Hughes, what is your address on file? The mailing address?
I'm not sure what I used with the appeal, but I normally would use my mailing address at my office, which would be 14330 Lakeshore Drive. Oh, I used PO, I'm sorry, on the app, no, that's the city. Okay, I'm looking at my file. Well, normally, I would use 14330 Lakeshore Drive as my business in Clear Lake. With the city appeal that we filed, I used my PO Box, excuse me, my PO Box 3490 in Clear Lake.
And that, that's the one that we have on file, sir.
Okay, and I've received nothing. Like I said, if I had received something about a hearing, I would be there. Yeah, okay, I see my appeals form now. It does say PO Box 3490.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. So Supervisor Sabatier, did you have anything else on that? Or? Supervisor Simon?
No, I was going to ask the same question.
Same question? With that, would I open it up to, I think I would open it up to Supervisor Sabatier?
I
Did you get rid of his background noise?
David, if it's possible to mute yourself?
Yeah, there he goes, yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. I'm just thinking about the potential funds that were spent by the local community members to try and get a report that, I, I, I want to believe both sides, we did send something, did it get lost in the mail and not get received to that specific box? That's possible. I know I always hand out some mail to my neighbors. But at the same time, having spent money to create an argument and not hearing that argument, also, I'm, I'm kind of struggling on, on that as well. I just wanted to at least put it out there in case that that changes the discussion. I'd hate to ignore the fact that community members did spend money and potentially did not receive. I take it Mr. Hughes is showing us the hydrology? But anyways.
Yes.
Yeah, how many pages is that report?
Mr. Hughes, how many pages is that report that you're showing us?
What I have, excuse me, what I have so far is seven pages. But again, they were asking for comment back, and I was waiting to get, like, it's dated the 8th. So today's the 12th. I, I, like I said, I sent it to the neighborhood, and I'm waiting for comment back from them to give comment back to EBA Engineering. And then, like I said, once I got comment back, I was going to contact the county and find out where to send this report and when our hearing might be. So like, I, I have no idea what happened to the notice, but like I said, if I had received a notice, I would be there.
Yeah, Vice Chair Scott, sorry.
And I think for myself, looking at what the appellant has put down as reasons for wanting to have this denied, one is because it's in the sphere of influence for the city of Clear Lake, and we have a letter from the city of Clear Lake clearly stating that they do not have an issue with this. So that kind of voids that point. And the second point, that there was no issue when hops was being grown there, and hops takes more water. So it's almost like it's a bias against cannabis with the water usage, because there was more water being used when hops was being grown there.
Can I argue that, please? Hello?
Yes. What, what is your comment?
Okay, number one on the Okay, number one on the, on the, now I'm trying to remember, I'm thinking while I'm talking. She just made two points. One was, oh, within, I just want to say one thing. When the, when the city council, did we go back to the city council a second time to affirm that they didn't have a problem growing within 100 feet of the city limits?
Mr. Hughes, if you don't mind, I need to stop you. I've just been notified that on the, the staff has looked at the labels and had found that Mr. Hughes' name is not within the labels and more than likely has not been notified. So with that, we are going to need to continue this item.
Thank you.
Yeah. C E O Hutchinson, would you like to add to that or?
That's the correct action.
Okay. Supervisor Sabatier.
I have some clarifying questions about the presentation that I'd like to still ask, if that's appropriate, since everyone is here.
Yeah, we're going to have to continue it, so we'll come back and.
I figured I might as well try.
I think that because there is apparently, staff has confirmed that if Mr. Hughes, as the appellant, was not duly notified and Mr. Hughes, as the appellant, is saying he didn't receive notice, at this point, we don't have evidence that he was duly notified and simply failed to show up. So he is entitled to this process. I realize it can be inconvenient for other people, but notice to the appellant would have been a crucible issue here. So I would suggest you not take up further proceedings at this time and just reset the matter.
Excellent, and that's what we'll do. Mr. Noel, did you have something very brief that you'd like to state?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I just have to question the issue of the California Government Code requirement for public notice that is mandated to go out in the case of the county to property owners within 725 feet or whatever the number is. That's the required notice that needs to go out. The notice to the appellant, just like a notice to the applicant, is more of a courtesy. It's a form of communication that is, you know, typically performed by county staff in the processing of an application. And to my knowledge, it is not a mandatory notice. And, you know, quite frankly, communications between the county and applicants isn't always the greatest. And, you know, I guess I'm just really questioning whether or not the appellant was entitled to legal notice, like public notice to surrounding property owners.
Supervisor Piska.
The appellant paid for this. And we have, we've discovered that he wasn't notified duly. So I think we're going to postpone it. And I'm sorry if that, if you have a problem for that, a problem with that and if it inconveniences you, but that is our process and that's what we're going to stand by.
So what we'll do is we'll continue this to a later date. I think we need to ensure that Mr. Hughes is properly notified of a specific date. Can we set that date now or? We shall set this date now. Mr. Noel, do you have a preference? We'll schedule a date together with Mr. Hughes right now as well. So what's that looking like?
So Johanna, do you, I have my list of things that are in line for upcoming agendas. Mr. Chair, do you want to look like two weeks out, four weeks out, something like that? You want to give us some idea of your thoughts?
Yeah.
So then probably a minimum of three weeks out to make sure the notices go out again. So then that would push us up to May 3rd or later. There are some things on the May 3rd agenda, but probably at this point, looking like there's still room for an appeal. Johanna, unless you have something I'm not thinking of?
I've noticed something for 10:30 on May 3rd, but any other time would work.
And so that day, we're anticipating an update from the Risk Reduction Authority, a wildfire proclamation, a tree mortality update, a fish and wildlife prosecutor of the year award. So it does appear that there would be room on the 5-3 agenda. The 5-10 agenda also looks good.
So Supervisor Sabatier.
I would suggest the earlier the better.
So the 3rd, it looks like the 3rd is probably what we're okay with. Is that amenable to you, Mr. Noel, May 3rd? And Mr. Hughes, if you're online, can you notify us if you understand that May 3rd will be when we bring this back?
Yeah, that's what I'm understanding. I would have preferred the 10th, but that's fine.
We're going to go ahead with the 3rd, sir, if at all possible. So with that, we're going to continue this, this, wait, what time would it be? 11:00? So we're going to continue this to May 3rd at 11:00 o'clock to continue this item of public hearing and appeal. So with that.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion or anything of that nature? Yes, so we'll need a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
So I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This item is moved to May 3rd at 11:00 a.m. With that, we'll move on to our 6.8, our 11:00, Discussion of Cannabis Tax Reform and B, Consideration of Resolution Amending Cannabis Cultivation Tax Due Dates. And I will give the floor to Carol Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Patrick Sullivan, our tax administrator, is going to present this item to you today. And he's going to use Zoom so he can show you spreadsheets as you deem fit and advance some slides. So I want to thank Patrick for his continuing work on this. This is in follow-up to the discussion we have with your board on March 8th.
Morning, Board. I'm just going to run through the brief history of what got us here and lay out what's before you today. Just to recall, in January, your board considered multiple topics related to cannabis tax. You indicated you want to suspend the annual rate increase subject to the Consumer Price Index and also consider postponement of the tax due dates. Previously, a resolution was implemented, changing the due date for the second installment of 2021's cannabis tax to May 15th and that waived the applicable late payment penalties until then. On March 8th, your board considered additional options. One of the primary discussion points was changing canopy, was changing the taxable area from the cultivation area to the more restrictive canopy area. That results in about a 15% reduction. And your board gave direction at that time to do that. And the way to permanently adjust that is through ordinance. Also, at that time, your board considered different payment due dates for the future, both a further extension of the 2021 second installment and new due dates going forward that would be set later for each year of cultivation. So today, we've returned with a resolution that would adjust that second installment due date from the 2021 tax year to October 31st, changing that May 15th date to the 31st of October, giving cultivators further time to pay. The second part of the resolution changes the new due dates going forward. This would be starting with the 2022 tax year. The new due dates suggested in the resolution are January 1st and May 1st with penalties attached 30 days later. So that essentially means January 30th and May 30th would become the dates where cultivators could pay without penalty going forward. This was satisfying or hopefully seeking to help alleviate the concern about taxes being due before products have been sold by pushing taxes for the current year, their due date into the following year, allowing time for that process to take place. Your board had further considered rate reductions in your last meeting. And I, we did present a staff PowerPoint that walked through some of those different calculations and figures. The difference in this meeting, we are also looking at relief for 2021, which was raised in the last meeting. But since our last presentation, local industry members have brought to our attention that they are having difficulty planning their business operations without more certainty in what their taxable basis is going to be. Because of the structure of our cannabis tax ordinance, the moment they begin to take any steps towards cultivation, which many growers are looking to do this month or in May, once they've taken steps in furtherance of those cultivation efforts, that tax is imposed. And right now, they don't know what that tax is going to be. Your board considered different measures that may offer relief, but it's not been set yet. So what their concern is that when they plant, they don't know what their tax bill will become unless they have an answer in advance. One of the other points that was raised last time was that the state is looking at adjusting their tax framework. There are multiple bills still in progress that may reduce the tax rate and particularly eliminate the cultivation tax, which in our last presentation was raised that this is the primary tax that impacts our local community here. It can often be over 80% of the tax burden associated with government cultivation taxes. But the problem that's becoming clear is that the state reforms are potentially not going to come in time to make a difference for this tax year, for local industry members. Cultivators would be having to decide whether to plant without potentially the ability to operate under a new state framework. And that would still trigger those higher tax bills, still result in the difficulties that existed last year. So it's unlikely there will be a significant change at the state level before the end of the year, which is why we wanted to bring back these options for relief at the local level in the meantime. What staff has raised is, in their proposal, is offering relief for last tax year of 50% as a temporary reduction. In most cases, this would essentially mean the second installment is not due. Then as well, for 2022, there would be a 50% reduction proposed. And I'll just highlight this last piece, which is another element of concern that was raised was authorizing a temporary change or a more immediate change from cultivation area to canopy area. Because an ordinance is not yet complete, cultivators are still facing a tax bill that would, or a tax basis that would theoretically be generated off cultivation area rather than canopy area. So we were looking at certain solutions that may offer more immediate certainty. One idea was a resolution that could temporarily use canopy area this year as a basis while a more complete tax ordinance is drafted. And that's something else we want to bring forward for your board's consideration. I have the PowerPoint presentation from your last meeting with a lot of the tables and figures. If your board wishes, I can run through those again. I have other data available if there are questions, for instance, about how much total revenue we've brought in, what the impacts would be if we want to go through that more specifically. Generally, staff looked at these reductions in their proposal as a way that if we could maintain the programs that are in place, all of the allocations of spending that your board has actually given to this point that has been assigned to particular uses. And even with these cuts, we could still maintain that. Staff's position is that if we were to go past these reductions, it could become, it could begin to impact services. We certainly would be eating into whatever stabilization or reserve we've developed. So just balancing these factors, that's how staff came up with this proposed reduction. So if your board wishes, I'm happy to revisit any of those tables if that's helpful in your deliberations.
Thank you, thank you, Patrick. Are there any questions for Patrick? Supervisor Piska.
So with the reduction for 2021, would that second payment be a credit or a refund for people that have already made those payments?
So there's been about $1.2 million worth of payments made as part of that second installment. So anyone that paid that second installment, yes, it could sit as a credit. And my understanding is that's probably what many would choose to do. But there could be situations, for instance, if someone has ceased cultivating, where they may want that in the form of a refund. So once that, if that reduction were to be put in place, there is the potential that some of that could go out as actual refunds.
And I would appreciate looking at that data again.
Okay. Just a moment and I can bring that up. So again, this was just the highlights of the ordinance that allow these changes to be considered by your board. Changing the taxable area from cultivation area to canopy provides that initial 15% reduction on average by site. As we go through these, this was just highlighting how site by site, it can be a radical difference in terms of what the effect is of changing cultivation to canopy because of the structure of each site. Some sites are getting a small reduction, approximately 7%, others are getting larger reductions, 27%, 45%. It all depends on how that site's laid out. So I just wanted to highlight again that as a baseline before we look at the further reductions. The due date's being extended out. So this, this was an example of different sites, how they would be impacted by these reductions. Just with a 50% reduction between canopy, between the change to canopy and the temporary reduction in the tax rate, that reduction can be magnified. So it's going to feel more like 50% for a lot of the sites involved. This is where we get to Supervisor Piska, your question about revenue and what the impacts are. With canopy tax, using the rough data that was available from C D D, this is what the projected amount would be. I just wanted to highlight again that each year, we have had many cultivators say they don't wish to use their whole area, that we're often going through reductions in terms of the actual area that's used. We expect that to continue. We have had inquiries on that already. So this would be the high end of what's possible off the data that we have available right now.
Is that for 2021 or 2022?
Oh, I'm sorry, this is going forward. Let me get to 2021. About 4.7 million of what was paid this last year was for the first installment of the 2021 tax. Approximately, oh, I'm sorry, 4.7 million total was paid on 2021 taxes and approximately 1.2 million of that was from the second installment. So that's where the refund would come out of, the potential for a refund. And like we said, many have indicated they want to have that as a credit, but we would have to consider giving that on refunds as requested. So 1.2 million is what's been paid so far. And that's out of about 16 million in total in cannabis tax that's been collected. And then the other thing to keep in mind is that as we extend out the due dates into next year, that would be the next time that we'd see a larger amount of money. October 31st would be the next time that we'd receive any installments of cultivation tax. But it would, it would not be of significance, especially if there's the 50% reduction that your board's considering. So 16 million would, that we've received so far, that number would not essentially change much until January of next year.
Supervisor Sabatier, you had a question?
Yeah. And I'm sure we're going to hear from the industry today. I'm just, I feel that January just creates the same problem. I feel that January just creates the same problem. I want to offer it again. I get it that too many changes requires it to go back to the public. And I think that at the very latest, November 2024, we need to bring it back to the public for whatever changes it is that we are making. Because obviously, there needs to be some changes because this is either zero industry or some industry. So we have to make some changes. But I think it's respectful to put it back for the public to vote on. But I think it also would help the public to see how it works with some of those changes. And I'm just putting it back out there that I think that looking at a gross receipt is the appropriate way because January, I don't know how many of these growers are selling their stuff by January. Are they still trimming? Are they still processing? So asking in October and January, I don't know that there's a huge difference. I think there's opportunity, but I don't know that there's a huge difference. And again, we're taxing something that hasn't been sold, and we should understand the market that selling right now is not exactly coming off the shelf at a high speed. So I just think it's continuing the same problem, but just pushing it further on down the pike. I'm okay with the 50% somewhat. I think it's fair for what is happening in the market. But at the same time, I'd love to see if we can maybe meet halfway where some people really, they knew the market was looking pretty grim and still move forward knowing what the taxes were and now are asking for help. So I'd offer maybe 60% rather than 50%, but I'll be okay if the rest of the board moves forward with 50. But I think the gross receipts is just the way to go. The amount of wasted time, both from Mr. Sullivan and our staff trying to figure out canopy, trying to figure out cultivation, we're still going to have to sit there and try to figure out what the exact measurement is that you pay us correctly. Gross receipts, we do that with Airbnbs. We do that with our hotels. And I think it's a process that we should implement what's already tried and true. And if we have any inkling of thoughts that we don't trust the industry, then why are we even having this conversation at all? Let's just shut it down. I want to trust the industry and treat them like a business. And I think the gross receipts is the way to go because that way, if they sell, we get taxes. Same exact process as anyone else that pays their taxes. So those are some of my thoughts right now. But I appreciate the conversation.
All right. Any other supervisors? Pat, did you have anything else to add before I open it up to public comment?
No, just that I'm happy to take any further questions as your board may have them.
All right. And with that, I'm going to just set a quick reminder that we're going to hold the public comment period to two minutes rather than three.
Can I just add one other thing?
Yes.
We're not talking about gross receipts today, and that's not something that we can do today. So it's probably not something that we should have in the comments. It just stays strictly what we're talking about on the agenda.
I thought it was tax reform on the agenda.
Well, okay, but the changes that we can make is the 50% reduction or that reduction. But we're not at that place where we're going to be doing the gross receipts changes.
I'm offering it as an alternative to what's being offered. I don't think we could only speak to the 50%. I think that it's, in my opinion, a conversation about reduction of taxes and seeing what's right.
It's not something that we're going to act on today, though.
Ms. Grant?
It does, however, fall within the agenda item.
It does. With that, we'll open it to public comments. I have some folks in the chambers. Please state your name for the record. You have two minutes.
Hello, my name's Chris Jennings. You know, Bruno hit all the nails on the head with this one. I feel like this is the best option we have available because it's our only option we have available presented to us. I also kind of feel like government side, cannabis side, we're at a meeting ground. And I think when we have something along the lines of 50%, 25%, all of these tax weird things, rewrite everything up, I think that this goes to show that we're all very hopeful that the market's going to bounce back. The market's not going to bounce back. This is where we're at. We're stuck here. And I also kind of feel like when we're asking only 50% of a tax reduction, it's almost like we all just met for the first time. We're trying to like feel each other out and kind of be like walk down the middle and be like, okay, well, maybe they're cool with this. Maybe they're cool with that. But the truth is, like, we don't need a 50% reduction. What we should be doing is probably suspending all our taxes for this year. I'd love to say form a committee to figure out like the best possible outcome to do this, but that just takes time and money and energy that we don't have and the time we don't have. We should definitely go back to the gross receipts. That's the only way, not go back, go to gross receipts. That's the only way it's going to work. What happens when we have another monsoon season in 15 years from now and we all get wiped out again? We got to pay 50% of our taxes, you know? Like, it's just not fair when it comes down to it. We shouldn't be paying fines of 25% of whatever these fines are. We're considered ag. The ag people don't get paid fines like that. It's already bad enough. We're going to put a lien on our property and take our property if we don't pay our taxes, let alone would be able to grow the following year if we don't pay our taxes. So I think these fines and fees that we get hit with is just ridiculous. But really, we need to go to gross receipts because either selling weed or not selling weed. Your numbers show you didn't collect almost $12 million is what I'm reading by your taxes. People's not selling weed. I'm not selling weed. I own Lake State Herbal Solutions. Our sales are down a substantial amount from last year. We need real reform.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Richard Durham. When Proposition 64 was written, it was done in the dark. Today, we know better. We've taxed a farmer to abject poverty. Prices were high. Supply was low. Today, things have changed, and there's an oversupply of cannabis. Until things change in the state and federal level, we'll continue to have supply issues. I implore the board of supervisors to consider the fact that nobody had an idea of how the market would evolve. Current tax rate is unsustainable. We need relief, and we need it now. We definitely should not have to pay for the cultivation area. That's bathrooms, parking, processing rooms. That's just regressive. Canopy is what the state licenses, and that's what we should be taxed on. Please consider 15 cents per square canopy foot. Either that or let us pay on taxes at point of sale or gross receipts. No other industry is taxed without a sale being completed. This is all evolving. Please don't destroy the hard work that has been done over the past years. Please side with growing Lake County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham.
Good morning, Chair Crandall and supervisors. My name is Sarah Bodnar, and I'm policy advisor to the Lake County Cannabis Alliance. I want to start by saying a truly sincere thank you to CAO Hutchinson and Patrick, who spent a lot of time having real dialogue with the industry, understanding how the tax structure affects the farming practices on the ground. And thank you for bringing forward this proposal today. We're super eager to have a decision made. I mean, I think Patrick laid it out very clearly. It's impossible as a business owner to head into another farming season and not know what your debt or your taxes are going to be in any other industry that could stop you from operating at all, even going to the grocery store and not knowing how much money you have to spend on groceries until you get, or what things are going to cost until you get to the checkout line. And that's really where we're at. There's so much uncertainty in every direction. We could have filled the boardroom today because this issue is so imperative. But we wanted to be efficient also and unified as an industry. To prepare for today, we circulated a petition and got over 140 signatures on it supporting our tax ask. So we have two very clear things we are asking the board to take action on today based on this proposal. The first is a 50% tax reduction for 2021 so that we have certainty around what we owe or do not owe as we head into a new year. And the second is that we formalize this decision around canopy only. You've heard the cases for it, and you understand the disparity between how Lake County has been taxing versus every other jurisdiction in the state. And that having that certainty as a starting point is so important so that we know how we can plant, where we can put our plants this year. Beyond that, we support all consideration of additional tax reform and relief. Like, everything that's been said today is a good idea to consider, and we understand that the board is going to have this ongoing discussion. So we would really hope to walk away today with those two decisions made. First, a 50% tax reduction and canopy only. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, board. My name is Kristin. I'm from Magic Cannabis Farms. Thank you all for your work and coming here today to listen to us. Yesterday, I-
Your last name?
Correct. Callahan, Kristin Callahan. I would really, I would just like to support the board today. Thank you, Bruno, for everything that you're bringing to the table about gross sales tax receipt. Thank you, Sarah, for the board and LCCA's effort in tax relief. I would like to present the board with a book that I gave to the Assembly, Cecilia's Office, yesterday. This is a clear example of what is needed for this board to understand the supply chain in California cannabis, especially in regards to the least common denominator, craft cannabis in California. This is a journey through my farm story. I can only speak for my farm, and I'd really love if the board would take some time to review what it's like to go through the supply chain, including invoices, metric, and various other articles along my journey. I think it's a really wonderful thing to share your experience, strength, and hope. It's the only way that we can really identify the problems and move forward. I support tax relief for cannabis farmers and especially the least common denominator, family farms, who will be extinct if we can't make decisions based on the reality of what the industry's facing. Thank you. And one final thing I'd like to read if I could just take one time. It's one page. I want to keep everybody on the same page from the state to the, I want to be transparent. This is what, this document I gave to Senator Dodd's office yesterday. I would like to, can I please read it?
Well, you can submit it because your time's probably coming up real quick, but I'll-
I would really, really like to read this, please. Thank you.
I'll allow it.
"Thank you for the opportunity to hear us. Farmers are the foundation of our world. Proposition 64 created inequities in their distribution model. Cannabis farmers deserve the same opportunities to bring their farm to the consumer on similar platforms as craft beer and wineries. A direct marketing model reduces carbon footprint on the cannabis cultivator. Solution? Cannabis cultivators deserve the right of an equitable format for processing, packaging, and holding their product for direct marketing. A CSA pilot program consisting of, but not limited to, a co-op association to distribution, i.e. B Corp buyright model." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next time, submit that beforehand. We'll have it and say, refer to my letter.
I will probably never do this again. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Next.
Hi, board. My name is Tyler Mitchell from Kelseyville. I'd a little bit, just like to say that if we're not free to talk about tax reform in all ways, would we have to completely reset and figure out what the origin of government is? Because government is here to protect our freedoms. And if we're not free to discuss something, then what are we doing here?
Well, what we're talking about today is a short-term reduction. And whether or not we go forward with that is the conversation. We can talk about gross receipts and other taxation methods in the long run, but that's not something that we can adopt today because our staff hasn't developed that strategy. There are so many unknowns. That's something that needs to be thoughtfully and strategically laid out and possibly put back to the voters. That's why I say just to temper expectations, that's not something that we can truly adopt today because we haven't built for that.
I understand. It just says tax reform. And so when the board of supervisors says that we can't discuss tax reform, it just really feels like we're not here to protect our freedom to be able to discuss that.
Well, I think it's more of a time constraint. We've got so much on our agenda today. We have a really long day. So I was just hoping we could keep the conversation focused on what we can accomplish today.
And so, Ms. Grant, please.
As I already stated, tax reform is going to include commentary. Supervisor Piska's right. You can't take action on it today because it's not included on the agenda that way. But within your two-minute timeframe, tax reform issues of any kind can be legitimately discussed. I've already said that.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Bryant. I'm a newly approved county cannabis permit recipient as well as a state license approval recipient, District 5. I wrote out two pages so that I could speak quickly when I heard it got changed from three minutes to two minutes. I'm going to ad lib. I'm here to speak in favor of permanently changing the taxation of cannabis projects from a tax on cultivation area to canopy area. I believe when the original ordinances were created, there was not given a consideration of what that would mean today. In my case, very specifically in my application, was requested to project in the future what my usage of my cultivation area was going to be. And that includes things that I'm not going to be doing this year, probably next year, and the year after. The most equitable method, I believe, that should be adopted today is a conversion from cultivation area to canopy area, which makes all of our projects even equitable and fair. I am in incredibly strong support and favor with all that Chairman, Commissioner, Supervisor, sorry, Sabatier has mentioned in regards to receipt taxation. But to your point, for approval today, now, I'm innumerablely supporting 50% reduction, but also the permanent conversion from taxation on cultivation to canopy area. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello. Thank you all so much for all of your dedicated time and energy trying to sort through this proposition that was dropped in all of our laps that has proven to be incredibly challenging to sort through. As the state continues to try to figure out what they're going to do, we're stuck doing the same thing. And I just feel like as a cannabis operator myself, I own and operate with my husband, Noble Gardens. We're a very small farm. Our maximum will be 15,000 square feet. Right now, we've been stuck at 5,000.
Can we have your name for the record?
Patricia Lanier. So we've been stuck at 5,000 square feet because we will not move forward with additional canopy until the market supports additional canopy growth. So with that in mind, I think that it's really important to take into consideration and look at how much of what has been grown in the County of Lake has actually been sold at this point before we even determine whether or not we're going to tax farmers next year. We should be looking to offer relief for a market that has collapsed. 50% reduction right now, beautiful. Thank you so much. Any help you can give would be greatly appreciated. But as we move forward, we're talking about how to pursue taxing something that is literally, we're operating at a negative. How can you tax us on anything at this point? There's nothing. There's nothing to tax. Nothing's been sold. And what has been sold hasn't been collected on because there's a predatory relationship going on between distributors and farmers right now. That needs to be examined. There needs to be more regulation in that regard. Please, look at it. Ask these questions of farmers. What has your experience been participating in the supply chain? Because it is horrendous. It's criminal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, members of the board and county staff. My name is Nora Dalbaka. I live in Hidden Valley, Lake. And I'm just here to thank you all for taking this seriously and listening to these farmers. Just want to say as much as you can do today, as permanently as you can do it, to give some ability for the farmers and cannabis businesses that are operating legally in this county to plan for their future and move forward. But we really appreciate you all considering this and your support of the industry. We're very happy to be here, so.
Thank you.
I got pushed up here by Jennifer. My name is Mary Draper. And first of all, I want to say thank you very much for taking a look at this and making the consideration. The staff did a lot of work in preparing this, and it's greatly appreciated. I don't agree that people knew that this- I don't agree that people knew that this fall was going to happen this year. I don't think they prepared for it. I don't think there was any way they could have known it. We all knew that the prices were going to come down, but this quickly and this drastically, I don't think anybody was prepared for it. I think we're looking at a lot of people that have lost a lot of money as a result. Because when they first made their plans, they were expecting it to sell 800 a pound, maybe. And that's not what happened. I think that we also need to look at this group of people that next year they can plan for a drastic reduction. They can do their budget that way. But also, if we take a look at this in a micro level, for the community, for the county, our sales tax went up, what, $5 million? I think that this has a lot to do with that. I think these people have supported the buying cars, getting your cars repaired, having housekeepers, the lumber stores, the grocery stores, the doctors, the dentist, hairdresser. They have added so much to the economy in this county, and it has given back. It's not just the cannabis tax that the county has received, but it's also the impact of their business that has shown up in your sales tax. It's shown up in the helping of your other local community businesses in having a better business. And I ask that you reduce their last year's tax to 50% because I think they drastically need that to go forward for next year. And by the way, I am a distributor, and it really hurts my feelings when people talk about distributors like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may offer a correction, we didn't increase our sales tax by 5 million. I think we may have gotten close to 5 million in total.
Oh, I thought it was an increase.
All right. Thank you for that. Next.
Good morning. Jennifer Smith, LCCA. Here to reiterate most of what you've heard, you're all in receipt of the LCCA letter. We are very appreciative of the time that's been given to this topic over the last few weeks and over the last year. This isn't anything new. We've been trying to address this for a while. I'm going to reiterate what 140 people have signed on in agreement with the LCCA board. We are here today for some answers. We are here today to support the staff report of 50% reduction for the 2021 tax bill, 50% reduction for 2022, and to switch to a canopy-only tax. That canopy-only tax makes us competitive with every other market in the state. And also, the reduction in tax rate makes us more competitive with the rest of the state. These are the items that we would appreciate your acceptance of today with the note that we do look forward to permanent tax reform, that we work towards that in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there someone else that has? Okay, I see one person coming up.
Well, at the risk of saying the same thing 15 times, I'll keep it short and sweet. The, one thing that I would like to-
What's your name, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry. Michael Wagner. Pleasure to see everybody again. Along with the 50% tax and gross receipts and that whole dialogue, I think the immediate change for the 50% would be within keeping with the change in the market. But with that, take into consideration that this market's going to continue to change. And so you have a moving target. And while we talk about these finite or, you know, forever rules that we're talking about 50% or 35%, whatever it might be, leaving yourself some ability to make a change, which may be, like Bruno has brought up, the gross receipts. And like Jessica pointed out, that's not what we're getting to right now today. Maybe that would be the proper thing to put in front of the voters, who brought all this about, do they want to make it based on gross receipts? With that, the fluctuations in the market, what we're looking at are things outside of our control and outside of our realm. When we see a crash in the market like this, it was because a lot of black market was going on. Astronomical numbers of black market work was coming in, and that floods the market and eventually causes this downward effect where, when the black market is taken care of, there will be a rise again. So leaving it based on something like gross receipts, where the monies can come up and, as time goes on, to leave the flexibility for that money to change or move up as the market comes up. With that, I think taking into consideration the overregulation or maybe the overtaxation of the white market creates and solidifies the black market. The black market is a huge aspect to everything that goes on. And when you have tons and tons coming out of Southern Oregon and landing in Northern California, or California in general, we should reinforce the white market by helping the white market, and that will take care of the black market and stabilize our market.
Thank you. Not seeing anyone else with public comment in the chambers. I'll bring it to the Zoom room, and it looks like we have five people, two, four, yes. And so if you can unmute, Randy Wilk, you have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Randy Wilk, and I'm from Clear Lake Oak Hillside. And I just, I'm opposed to this proposition, and specifically to a specific tax reform, when we should be talking about other tax reforms, like the other gentleman had mentioned. Many residents are suffering from the economic hardships due to COVID and yearly wildfires causing many more to become homeless in the last several years. We would wonder why Lake County would sponsor Agenda Item 6.8 and would give only breaks to questionable business practices of cannabis operations with poor business models, but not to normal businesses and hard-working county residents. For example, many folks really need a break on property taxes and penalties when they occur them, when they have been under economic duress from that COVID and the wildfires causing many more to become homeless. It does not make sense with the cannabis business tax relief at this moment, when the county should focus primarily on the majority of hard-working residents making an honest living. That's my comment.
Thank you. Next, yes, sir.
I just want to make a correction. We're talking about taxation for a legal market, a legal industry, with hard-working people that are right here in this room.
Thank you for adding that.
I know I'm outnumbered on this.
Next, we have a-
Some of this is not correct.
Randy, your, thank you. Randy, your two minutes is up. Next, we have Spencer Andrews, if you can unmute. And you have two minutes. All right, Spencer, you're having a hard time with that, so we'll come back to you. Eddie Fernandez, if you can unmute.
Yes, hello, Board. Eddie Fernandez, Clear Lake. So yeah, I'm a cannabis farmer myself, and I am in total agreements with Mr. Bruno and some of the members there that we should be switching to gross receipts. You know, it's very hard to charge someone money and them not be able to sell their product and expect them to come up with all this money. You know, it's a lot of money, and I personally can speak on the fact that I put millions into my farm. I am a small farmer. I put my whole savings into it, and I never expected this crash, or honestly, I would have never bought this farm. If I would have known that SunGrown was going to have an issue in selling, I wouldn't have even got into it. So, you know, I went into it with the hopes of, you know, the American dream to, you know, make money and help my family and put my kids through college, but it certainly has gone the other way. Yes, sure, we expected it to happen at some point, but I didn't expect it to happen this quickly my first year there. And I will say, I think gross receipts is the only way, but for me personally, the way you guys are explaining this, how there's different ways, or people being charged are going to get a different break on the change. Like, for example, the cultivation area for me, I mean, I'm being charged an egregious amount. I have five acres of canopy. Yeah, I get a bill for $600,000. You know, I mean, it's absurd, you know? It's a lot of money. And if you guys cut it in half, that's still $300,000. And what I'm trying to say is, if it was just canopy in that area, I would only be paying about $200,000. Because if you were charging me a dollar a foot on five acres, it's about $215,000 to $220,000. Yeah, you know, you know, obviously, the cultivation area, I just think it's wrong because, like you guys stated, everyone's being charged a little bit differently. It's not a level playing field in my eye, you know? Where with the canopy area, it's flatly without, and everybody's being charged the same. So, yeah, I mean, 50% certainly will help. 50% certainly will help. But yeah, you're charging me for where my classrooms are, my roads. I mean, it doesn't make any sense.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Your two minutes is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Michael Cole Bruno, if you can unmute. You have two minutes. It looks like he's struggling with that. We'll go ahead and move on to phone 6205, if you can unmute.
I'm here.
Okay, go ahead then, Mr. Cole Bruno. And then 6205, your next.
Michael Cole Bruno, Ghost Dance Ranch in Lower Lake, District 1. And I also want to echo the comments of just thanking staff because they did take the time to come out and understand, you know, the taxable area and why canopy makes sense. And I do support the recommendations today of reducing that. One way I think everyone should look at this is this is a conversation with the legal, licensed, and willingly taxed industry. And it is a partnership between the county and the growers. And the best way to, on your end, from the county, to help the industry is to do these tax reductions, which are on the table today. And to continue the long-term discussion that Bruno raised as well, I think on the gross receipts tax, because many of us are. We have another license in the queue, and we are planning for next year, which is new revenue for the county, I might add. And I saw there's a long list of potential licensees in the queue. And so that's all new revenue coming your way. And I think people are going to make the decision based on what you do today. And if you do take this action to canopy and lowering the rate, I thought I heard Bruno say 60%, and I think that is something I always like to talk about, the Emerald Triangle becoming the Emerald Diamond, and Lake County being put in that. And it's important that we're competitive with the other counties around us. And I think today is a huge step in that direction. And once again, I just want to express my absolute gratitude to everyone for taking this up today. Thank you.
Thank you. Phone 6205, if you could state your name for the record and unmute. You have two minutes.
Hello, this is Bart Levinson. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Several weeks ago, Supervisor Sabatier spoke compassionately about his concern that fire victims weren't getting a similar consideration about their tax burdens following fire. And I'm a fire survivor. My economy totally collapsed due to disaster. There was no discount or consideration for me or my economy. In fact, although my property is completely burned and not improved in any way, still has a crushed septic, a completely ruined well. My property taxes have now been raised by $40,000. And the amount is above what I could possibly sell the property for-
Ma'am, we're talking about the cannabis tax.
-that I would owe to clean it up.
Thank you. Next, Damian Ramirez.
Damian Ramirez from Lake County Grown. I'm in agreement with the proposal set forth by county staff. All three other recommendations are reasonable suggestions that will have a net positive impact. This is a tremendously difficult time for this new industry, and I applaud staff's efforts in acting in such an efficient and logical manner that takes into consideration the long-term viability of the industry. This industry provides a large stream of revenue, jobs, and overall growth to Lake County. And I feel the board's acceptance of these proposals is imperative for the industry to move forward in a fair and reasonable manner. The decision on reducing the 2021 tax rate by 50% is truly a make-or-break decision for a large number of cultivators in the county. And taking this long-term approach on this topic will actually create way more tax revenue in the future than any amount previously collected. This reduction will allow many operators to continue their projects, hence keeping their staff employed, maintaining their property values, and netting continuous annual tax revenue for the county for the next decade plus. With that said, I feel it would be most prudent for the board to refrain from finalizing the future cultivation tax rate at this time as it is much more of a nuanced topic. There are a lot of factors that need to be considered, and we should give the decision the time and respect it deserves. Understanding that the board previously voiced their desire to wait until they had more clarity on what type of tax relief the state is going to enact, I feel it is best to revisit this topic after further information is gathered. I kindly ask the board to vote in agreement on the following. Extend the tax due dates to better coincide with product sales for the farmers. Reduce the 2021 tax cultivation by 50% to help many farmers survive the volatile negative market swing that occurred. Three, change the taxable area moving forward to be only canopy to coincide with all other counties in the state. I suggest that we take the next month to deeply consider the best option moving forward with future tax rates and find a solution that will be most beneficial for everyone involved. In the meantime, let's get these other proposals voted on, passed, so we can move forward into this growing season with some clarity and momentum for this new industry that has brought a lot of positives into this great county. Thank you, county staff. Thank you, board.
Blair Gue, if you can unmute. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Yes, my name is Blair Gue. The last name is spelled G-U-E. I'm an attorney at Rogaway Law Group, which is a law firm that represents many cannabis cultivators throughout the state, including in Lake County. And first off, I want to echo what many other speakers have said and just applaud the board and county staff for taking the issue of cannabis business tax reform extremely seriously, especially given what the industry is going through right now, and for understanding that, unlike some of the comments that we've heard from people that may be opposed to cannabis tax reform on the local level, that cannabis cultivators are truly facing what many call an extinction event. So this is really a matter, I think someone said it great earlier, of taking action now so that there is at least some cannabis industry in Lake County in future years because we truly are looking at the shutdown of many local farmers, if not the local farmer as we know it, with the current burdens that are on the industry. So I do want to echo the request of Lake County, the Lake County Cannabis Alliance, which is to immediately reduce the 2021 tax bill for all cultivators by 50%. And then for 2022, to reduce the square footage tax to 15 cents per square foot of canopy or enact a gross receipts tax of 1%. It's my understanding we're not taking action on the 2022 tax rates or how that will actually be taxed at this meeting, but I hope that the board and staff are open to continuing the conversations about future taxation in the next month, couple months, so that farmers can know exactly what they're getting into for next year, how they need to prepare, and how they can maintain their businesses in the face of the struggles that the industry is facing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Spencer Andrews, if you can unmute. You have two minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Spencer Andrews. I'm here today representing Kindness Farm on Manning Road in Lakeport. I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for discussing this matter. That's vitally important to our local industry. We believe that with relatively modest tax reform, the cannabis industry can continue to bring jobs and economic growth to the region. We therefore respectfully request that the board support a tax reform proposal that, one, immediately reduces the 2021 tax bill by 50%, and, two, changes the taxable area from cultivation area to canopy area for 2022. Thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you. With that, I will close public input. We'll bring it back to the board and go from there. Supervisor Piska.
So I deeply appreciate all the conversations we've been having and conversations we've been having with the industry and their input and the time that we've taken. I think it's been really important and really valuable. We were waiting to see what the state was going to do. We don't know that yet. It's imperative now that we provide this short-term stabilization to the industry for 2021 and 2022. So that's where I'm at right now. We will have that time to further consider other changes once maybe some of the dust has settled at the state and so much is in the air right now. It is an opportunity to continue this path and working forward to get to a place where our taxation rate can move with the market because I think that's ultimately where we need to be and can have that flexibility that will build the strength into this industry for the long term. So, you know, I think it's important right now, we do this, we can afford to do this. We've had time to do the proper analysis. And also, I'm in favor of changing from cultivation area to canopy.
Any other comments?
I had, I had a question for Anita, just briefly. When it comes to this resolution, and one of the thoughts and comments that we had in the last meeting before this was waiting for the state. We obviously know that's going to be like waiting till next year possibly or whatever. I don't even know when that is. We don't know when that is. But if so, could this resolution be hinged upon that? So we make our, our changes, and then when they make their changes, we talk about how we go forward from there? I don't know if it's the, what we vote on today, you know, if that makes sense. Do you want to make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense to me, but I think the industry needs to understand what the year is going to look like.
Right. No, I, I want to, what we're going to vote on today is going to be what it is for them for the next, until the state decides. And then when the state decides, we come back and look at what's best for the county from that point. I just wanted to see if that could be something we discuss, or is that something that?
Well, the resolution itself only talks to the tax payments. So you have the, the second installment of the twenty twenty one cannabis cultivation tax payment and that the new cannabis cultivation tax installment going forward would be January one and May one. So I, I'm not real clear on, the state probably won't have a great impact on that, but certainly the resolution could be adjusted if, if it did.
Need be, well, well, I'm, I'm not concerned with the dates per se, but like those two dates. What I'm concerned about is the fifty percent and then, and Canopy. We're, we're making those to adjust and assist the market and, and the, the farmers. However, when the state makes their adjustments, which we're hoping and anticipating that they'll do the same thing, then we can adjust what's best for the county after that, if that makes sense. Because what if the state makes considerable amounts of cuts and then we're cutting as well? We need to adjust it where, where it helps them, but also helps the county. That's all I'm looking at.
Right. Well, and today you're just going to be giving staff direction by consensus. So you can include those concerns and ask staff to address them if that's, if that's the role of your board.
Thank you. That's all I was asking.
But these are temporary because we're only laying this out for this year or last year and this year. So we're going to have that time to take all these things into consideration.
Okay.
Supervisor Sabatier.
And I think we mostly know what the state's going to do. Most of the bills aren't completely drastically different. Most of them are looking at elimination or postponement of the cultivation tax. There's talks about putting it back in front of the public, similar to our conversation that we're having as well. So I, it, it's going to be an issue of the excise tax because that's what they're playing with. They, they keep wanting to be net neutral on what the state is bringing in. So we'll see what, what it ends up, but I think by October thirty first, most likely we'll see something. But I, but we don't know. So I haven't heard anything from anybody talking about January first and May first. And so since nobody spoke up about that specifically, I'll ignore that part. But I think that, I, I think that the idea of what we're doing, we're going to have this exact same conversation next year after January first because of the lack of flexibility. I just, it, it's, it's, um, in, in, in my opinion, this, this is, this is not a fix. This is a shot in the dark in hopes that it works with an industry. And while we're here, and I will admit that the, the way that we're doing things is absolutely incorrect. A flat tax on something that we knew going from illegal to legal would drop. Yes, not as significantly as fast as it did. But that a flat tax was just a, a, not a good idea for us to, to go this way or for many of the other counties that are doing it that way too. But to continue with just a shot in the dark of what we think might work and the fact that we've already were most likely going to be reducing, we're going to be right back at being asked for another reduction. And I think that we need to direct staff to look into a gross receipt as well to figure out what, what, what will that look like and what's that sweet spot? Because one percent, I haven't even gotten that close to one percent. I think it needs to be higher than that. One percent would reduce our tax immensely, almost lower than possibly around the one to one to point five million dollar mark with the math that I've done. So I, I think we just need to look into it because that is the fix that we need or else it's just a shot in the dark of what the flat tax is going to do for us. And I think it's just going to bring us back to the same discussion with the same exact arguments being made that it doesn't work for the current status of the industry. It's a way to move forward, but it's not, in my opinion, it's not a fix.
Vice Chair Scott.
I'd just like to thank staff for their work on this. And it sounds like the industry is in agreeance with what staff has brought back. So I would like to move forward with what we have here, knowing that, you know, this is, we're going to have to look at this again in, in the next year. I think we have to lay it out very clear that if the state of California does come back in the next month, as EJ pointed out, this is still the direction we're going to go. I think the industry needs to know what this next year is going to be looking like, that we're not going to be coming back in the month, changing our mind again. So I think we need to make that very clear, that this is for the next growing season.
Thank you. Supervisor Simon.
Yeah, I want, I want to thank staff obviously too, and the input that do come from the industry, at least in the conversations, to get this to this point. So I don't think there's any silver bullet at this point. Maybe there is down the road. But I would like to move forward with the resolution today and obviously in support of the fifty percent reduction for both twenty one and twenty two. And then obviously, I would like to give direction to staff that we do bring it back for the change of the cultivation area to the Canopy area and have those considerations. I did have one question on the cultivation area for the twenty twenty two tax year. As we were talking, as going forward, we know this is, conversations are going to keep happening. I would put it out there that we do twenty two and twenty three for the tax year, for the taxable Canopy area, if we make that change.
You say that again?
So it just has twenty twenty two for the change on the cultivation area. And things take time. We understand that. So instead of one year, two years. Maybe there's a fix between now and then, but anyway, same conversation of giving us adequate time to make those changes.
All right. And I'll just finish with, you know, of course, thank you staff for, for your work on this. I really, if there's a way to know when the state was going to be finished, I'd be more happy because I'd be more, I'd be more inclined to make some changes after that. But we're at where we're at. So with that, if there's anyone that wants to entertain a motion or offer the resolution?
I, I just have a quick question. So on this resolution, it doesn't have the fifty percent or the Canopy. So we're asking for staff to bring back both the fifty percent and the Canopy? Okay, because I had only heard about the Canopy, so I just wanted to kind of make sure.
For next one.
And I agree to do that for twenty twenty three. It just makes sense. Noted.
All right. So the, let's see.
I offer the resolution.
All right. Resolution's been offered.
All right. Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, with that, lady is twelve thirty five.
And she's giving direction to staff to come back?
Yes, we'll, we'll give direction to staff to come back with the, more of the information on, is it fifty percent of tax? I'm sorry, the Canopy and the cultivation.
Cultivation to Canopy.
We'll be back with a resolution to make those changes.
Right.
And for twenty twenty three as well, just for clarity, because there has to be a.
Twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three.
Okay, ninety three.
Yes.
Got it.
You have that. Apologize for that.
Well, do we have consensus to also do some long-term planning on, will we have this window for this temporary fix for the other options that we've been talking about?
Yes, I think, I agree with that.
Yeah, I think everything needs to be looked at. Yes.
And Mr. Chair, for next week's actions, since you all seem pretty solid, would you like that put on the consent agenda or do you wish to discuss again?
And that is for?
For the reducing the tax rate to fifty percent for twenty one, twenty two.
I'm okay with that.
I think everybody's okay with it.
And changing Canopy to Canopy for twenty two and twenty three. Put it on the consent agenda or hear comments again?
We've had a hefty discussion.
Well, you can put it on and, and we'll see.
See how that goes. Do we need a four-fist with, because it's a tax or can three votes pass that, knowing that we're going to have a missing supervisor?
Three.
Just making sure.
All right. Supervisor Sabatier.
It slipped.
Okay.
It'll come back.
All right. So we've covered everything on that? All right. Apologize it. One more time for that, moving forward. So now we have, um, what is it, six point, well, six point nine won't be done till three thirty. So we will move on to seven point two. And consideration of Community Project Funding Resolution, Middle Creek, California and Community Project Funding Resolution, Middle Creek Flood Damage Reduction and Ecosystem Restoration. And with that, I will hand that off to CEO Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to welcome Assistant CEO Susan Parker into the Zoom. I see her name. Hopefully we'll see her face in a moment. Or Susan, are you hearing us?
Administrator Hutchinson, Susan is heading into the board chambers as we speak.
And here she comes. Okay.
She would come in sooner, but she has a, it's blocked.
So, Mr. Chair, as you know, this is follow-up from the discussion. This is follow-up from the discussion your board had last week when you approved the priority project for submittal to Congressman Thompson's office for the new round of earmark funding. And you directed that staff develop an additional project. And so Susan has worked on that and will present this.
Great. Good morning.
Good morning.
We did find two more projects and it's related to the Middle Creek project. Thankfully, that project is actually on an eligibility list. So it's really good news for us. So for the Army Corps of Engineers update, that's one million dollars. And for the redesign and relocation of seven transmissions lines, I'm sorry, I ran over some.
That's okay. Take your time.
That will be eight hundred thousand dollars. And there are two different subcommittees, so they won't compete. And we will allow, well, we, our hope is that we'll let the DC staffers determine who carries or who's going to do the jointly presentation on it. So it's all really good news. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm still out of breath. We will, with your permission, we will then submit those requests by this Friday.
Thank you, Susan.
Yeah, and we already had a, an email this morning from DC on the Armory asking some follow-up questions, so they're on it.
All right. Vice Chair to Scott.
So with that, so we could get more funding than just one project then? Is there a chance?
Yes, there, well, there's no guarantees, but is a possibility.
Now which, does the Armory sit on a different class?
Yes.
So all three of them are?
All three are in different subcommittees.
Wow.
So.
Supervisor Sabatier.
I just wanted to share my excitement when I saw this on the agenda. I, I was happy that we added on to that conversation last time and asked those questions. This is an important project that has a huge ripple effect impact. And so any steps forward that we can take to move it forward entirely is a win in my book. And so thank you very much for bringing this to us.
You're more than welcome.
Thank you for your work.
And, and also I'd like to thank Scott DeLiana and Marina. After they did their presentation yesterday, I said, let's look into this. I think this would be a viable project. And they came back and said yes.
All right.
So.
Any other comments from the board? Any comments from the public? I don't see anybody in the chambers, anybody on Zoom? Oh, all right. Bring it back to the board for action.
So we'd be offering a resolution?
We have two resolutions.
Two resolutions. All right. So I will offer the first resolution for a Middle Creek, California Community Project Funding.
First resolution.
Resolution.
First resolution's been offered.
All right. Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall.
Yay.
Okay. And there's a second one?
And then, yeah.
Oh, oh, once again, offer the second resolution.
Resolution's been offered.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes, right back at you.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall.
Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Susan, very much.
Thank you. Sorry for coming in out of breath. Burning heels.
You had a rush hour.
With that news, you could have walked, you could have walked slow as you wanted. You're good. Thank you. With that, the only thing we have left here is our six point nine, which is scheduled for three thirty. We've covered our non-timed items and we'll be going into closed session. Should we go into closed session?
Mr. Chair, did you do seven point three, the Lucern Town Hall?
Yes.
Oh, you did.
We did that earlier, yes. And we did calendars. Yes, we did that in between the, we did all of them, yeah? Except for six point nine and closed session.
Yeah. So the recommendation would be, as you know, we had intended for you to be heading off to a press conference with Congressman Thompson. That has been canceled. But you could take a lunch break and then return from your lunch break to complete your closed session and then return to your final timed item at three thirty.
Sounds like a plan.
That's good.
I'm hungry.
All right. With that, we will, we'll recess for break, for a lunch break and be back into closed session at two PM and then be opening later on at three thirty for the six point nine.
Should we read closed session now?
I'll read, so, yes, I'll read it right now. Closed session. Eight point one, Public Employee Appointment pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five seven B one, Interview of Interim County Administrative Officer, appoint of, Appointment of Interim County Administrative Officer. And then eight point two, Employee Disciplinary Appeal, EDA two two zero one pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five seven. And with that, we will break for lunch. Thank you.
And for any of you that are in Zoom, I would encourage you to leave and then you can come back into it at three thirty.
Yes.
What the, hold on.
Was there any action to be taken out of closed session?
Yes, Chair, there's action. Hold on, let me pull my agenda up so I can get the right numbers. For closed session eight point one, I'd like to make a motion to have Susan Parker appointed to the interim CAO as of April thirtieth at salary step one. I need a second.
Yep, and I will, I will second that motion.
So I have a motion and a second?
I will second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Was there any other action to be taken out of closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chair, for eight point two, I make a motion for, and the employee disciplinary appeal, twenty two dash zero one. I move to approve the findings and final decision and deny the appeal.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. With that, it looks like we are going to take up our six point nine item. A, consideration of interim urgency ordinance placing a moratorium on new agricultural and cannabis cultivation projects. And B, consideration of letter to the Governor Newsom requiring, requesting a halt on new cannabis cultivation licensing statewide. And C, consideration of requesting the Lake County Drought Task Force discuss, draft, and provide ag cannabis guidelines during drought conditions. And D, consideration of discussion of other actions regarding drought. And this was brought forward by Supervisor Sabatier, so I'll let you take it away.
All right. Thank you very much. There's, I, I'm going to review a couple of things. But first, I want to kind of preface the entire thing with what we're experiencing today and my belief and the belief of many scientists is not something that we're going to see disappear and never come back to. This is something that we have to figure out how to live within the medium that we're dealing with. Expanded droughts, extreme weather, where one year we might get a whole lot of water and one year we will get absolutely none. It is not about a predictable, stable environment at this moment in time. It's about chaotic type of situations and unpredictable situations. And so I just want to bring the discussion to the board to figure out what it is that we need to do to best protect the future of our communities. And that includes our residents, making sure that they have access to drinking water and whether that's through their water purveyors or whether that's through their own private wells. And that's to ensure the continuity of our economic basis, which is agriculture as well as our other businesses that are in our community. This is climate change. Whether you want to agree that this is man-made or not is not the discussion. It's, it's what's happening. It's what we're seeing in the trend. It's what we're seeing in the trends of our temperatures and our water and our rainfall. And we have to at least have the discussion to figure out how to act now rather than act after the fact that we are in a position that we can't go back. I do not want to cross the line of point of no return where we're looking back over our shoulder and saying, oops, we made a mistake and we acted too late. I accidentally seem to have done something in my discussions. I seem to have stepped on everybody's toes. I think I happen to have finally successfully brought our traditional ag and cannabis folks together, but I think it's, it requires all of us to come together in order to have this discussion because it's a very serious discussion. And so I'll go ahead and share my screen and move forward with my presentation that There we go. So when you go to drought.gov, it says that 100% of Lake County is in a D2 severe drought. Grazing land is inadequate. Fire season is longer with high burn intensity, dry fuels and large, and I can't read because I have the rest of my Zoom on here, large fire spatial extent. Trees are stressed, plants increase reproductive mechanisms and wildlife diseases increase. This is as of April of 2022. 29.96% of Lake County is in a D3 extreme drought. Livestock needs expensive supplemental feed, cattle and horses sold, little pasture remains, fruit trees bud early, producers begin irrigating in the winter. Fire season lasts year-round. Fires occur in typically wet parts of state. Burn bans are implemented. Water is inadequate for agriculture, wildlife and urban needs. Reservoirs are extremely low. Hydropower is restricted. Back in October of 2021, this was closer to 75% of Lake County, so prior to the rains. So the rain that we received back in December has made an impact, but the amount of rain that we received last year was not enough to be called a normal year for rainfall. Here is some of our rainfall. This comes from the U.S. Drought Monitor. In 2020, I have all of the different areas that have been collected for information as low as 4.35 inches in 2020 in southeast Clear Lake and as high as 20.48 inches in southeast Middletown. I'm actually surprised at the wide spectrum of precipitation that is received just in the single county, but it shows that different areas have different climates. In 2021, those numbers somewhat doubled, sometimes tripled. In Clear Lake, it was 13.13 inches and in western Upper Lake, it was 36.53. And I'm not going to go through every single one of those numbers, but it's just to show you the range of the difference and yet still in 2021 or in 2022, after seeing the increase of precipitation in 2021 in comparison to 2020, we are not looking good when it comes to the drought and what's happening in our environment. The average county rainfall is typically between 32 inches and 38 inches. So even in 2021, our average, our approximate average rainfall was about 10 inches, 10 inches shy of the maximum that we usually see. And in 2022, January through March were some of the driest months that we've ever seen in recorded history. A full lake is approximately 8.0 Rumsay. Last year's low for our lake was negative 2.5 Rumsay. Our current year's lake status is currently at, or yesterday, I don't, I didn't even look what it was at today, been busy, is at .34 feet Rumsay, which is a full three-quarters and actually a bit more than that of a foot lower than last year at the same date. So our, this is again to discuss the lake situation. We also got a report from Water Resources that we are estimated to reach our low of 1976-77 lake levels. Let me continue on here. The population of 1976-77 is not the same as it is today, so what's being drawn out of our lake is much more substantial than what was drawn out of the lake back then. This is a report from MyDryWell. It's storymaps rgis.com, but it comes back directly from mydrywell.ca.gov. And I looked at every single one of those red dots. It actually gets pretty thick in the Middletown area on the southern end. There's probably about 10 of those dots in that red blur. There was only one that was from 2016 where the problem was first observed, so I canceled that one out as an outlier. And the other one that was not, as of 2021, it was reported that there was some issues with their wells, was from 2020, which, as I just showed, was already a year of extreme drought. And these are only the wells that have been reported. We have had a lot of anecdotal conversations with many constituents about such things as well. Some of the actions that we've taken due to the drought, we've declared an emergency due to drought conditions in May, on May 6, 2021. On June 8, 2021, I brought a discussion similar to what we're discussing today, except today I'm offering an actual ordinance that comes along with it. The discussion was not very robust. I think that, in all honesty, and I had the same perspective, there was hope that we would be done, that we would not have another drought year. And I, I, I sit here not wanting to come back to you guys again next year, asking the same question, saying, we're still not done. I'd rather have a conversation and see if there's any actions we can take. We had an urgency ordinance that was approved for all land use projects to provide hydrology analysis before that, and that was July 27, 2021. Before that, it was simply well reports, no cumulative impact analysis on how our projects were going to impact the surrounding area. Projects are great. They move our economy, they create jobs, but if one project takes away from someone else's ability to have drinking water, or if one project takes away from someone's ability to do the use that's already been permitted, at that point, we're not doing our due diligence to ensure that those projects are correctly vetted before being approved. On August 24, 2021, we had an urgency, urgency ordinance approved to limit the amount of water hauler activities for cannabis cultivation. We started seeing a lot of water haulers, started seeing signs saying water for sale. I don't believe there's anybody that lives in Lake County that did not notice the increase of water haulers moving water around. There's a lot of reasons for why water haulers were being used. Some was to refill people's empty wells by filling up their tanks. Some of it was because of cannabis cultivation, legal and a lot of illegal, and some of it was for other purposes that I'm not listing right now. But that speaks to the dry well reporting that obviously we were seeing some issues with what was available in the groundwater for our constituents. On September 17, 2021, there was a health advisory on private intake from the lake due to the high cyanotoxin levels. There are people who are on private, well, private intake systems who were not able to purify their water or filter their water enough to make it potable water. We had to get some of our other water district purveyors to help out in ensuring that those people had access. Then we amended the water hauler urgency to include all ag and create limit of times for deliveries as we continued to get more complaints about the water truck situation. Water trucks all through the night. Water trucks creating dangerous situations on our roads because of early morning runs. And to be honest, I don't know that the ordinance stopped the water hauling, other than I would say the end of harvest season is probably what ended the water hauling and for those who needed drinking water, rainwater coming in. And then there's the conversation that started and I'm not going to venture a guess, but I'm definitely going to say it's probably not from the 2020 drought and 2021 drought status that we have tree mortality. I'd probably go back further to 2014 as it takes time for the reaction to be seen physically, but there is no way to drive on Highway 29 or drive around in our communities and not recognize that there is less water for our trees to survive, which have allowed for the pests and the bugs to start killing our trees rather than trees being able to protect themselves. And I'm sure that either I will be corrected by Supervisor Pyska or she will provide some more information on that. But it's an issue that we're dealing with. So then we go to some of our heaviest users that we're continuing to see applications for. And I will say I went even back further. In 2005, I was looking at our crop report, appreciate that those are posted on our website, and this is where I gathered these numbers as well. In 2005, we've gained about 2,000 acres of agricultural, traditional ag land being used. Mostly that increase has been in vineyard, so I've kind of segregated vineyard and cannabis because we know that pears are disappearing, walnuts, for some reason with the price dropping as much as it has, it's still the same amount of acres. And so I just wanted to at least explain why I segregated out vineyards with cannabis and they have some similarities. Between 2018 and 2020, we had 330 new acres of vineyard operations and between 2018 and 2021, 235 new acres of cannabis cultivation. As far as my research and my questions of asking for any future vineyard and cannabis increase, according to our ag department, there is no formal request for increase of acres for vineyards at this moment in time. And for cannabis, there is approximately 800 acres in applications that is currently being processed. My goal here is not to prohibit the growth. My goal is to ensure that we have the vetting tools to protect our environment and make sure that approvals are done correctly. So if we do an ag moratorium, and, yeah, I'll get to that later, no approvals for projects converting native land to ag land with an exception that projects that are already in the state clearinghouse for sequel review would be allowed to move forward, but there are currently zero projects. So at this moment in time, a temporary moratorium would not have any significant impact to ag as far as projects that are in the queue. Cannabis moratorium, no approval of projects, exception, project is already in the state clearinghouse for sequel review. I'm going to change that. It said 14 plus projects. It's actually 15. I just went upstairs during lunch just to check in and see where we were. And so anybody that started the process with the state clearinghouse would be able to move forward, the rest would be put on pause. And then a review in 45 days. What are the economic impacts due to the moratorium on approvals? Status of where we are with producing higher standard for hydrology reports. I've been going through some of our hydrology reports and some are really good and some, in my opinion, and I'm not a hydrologist, but in my opinion, just seem a little light on helping us understand how projects will be successful and not impact a local community or a local region during a drought. I'm seeing average rainfalls that don't denote the average rainfall of the last five years, but denote the last, average rainfall of the last 30 years, sometimes longer. I don't know that we're going to go backwards. I think that we have to look at what's happening now and be prepared to deal with now as potentially the future we have to deal with. I think that our standards for our hydrology reports need to be upgraded. I think our review and analysis of hydrology reports need to be upgraded so that, again, we can ensure that when projects are going through the process, that they are being vetted to the best capability based on climate change analysis, not the past 100 years, 30 years, 50 years, whatever it is that I've seen in some of these hydrology reports. And again, some do a good job, but not all. Status of where we are with producing best management practices, BMPs for ag cannabis during declared droughts. We've been in a drought for a long time and I have failed to do so, but yet at the same time, I don't think that this is up to me to do so, other than to get stakeholders to bring BMPs to us to set as guidelines. We have to work together because in climate change, we're all going to have to figure out how to sacrifice equally and not fight for what resources are available. We have to figure out how to work together because collaboration is going to be the easiest way for less impact on the less fortunate. And we don't have BMPs when there's a declared drought. For example, we've all seen it, sorry to pick on this one vineyard, but overhead sprinkling in the middle of a hot day is a little absurd when we're in a severe drought, yet we have nothing that we can use to ensure that that practice changes. I want those practices. I want stakeholders to work with our staff and our team and create those BMPs so that then we can hold people accountable for when we're all supposed to work together to help each other during these sensitive times of climate change. And right now, we can't find people and we can't set expectations or accountability when those aren't in the rules. And so that's what my outcome is of talking about a moratorium is not just because. And to me, the drought is definitely something we should all be concerned and I've spoken with a lot of different people from different stakeholders, different industries, and I didn't hear a single one of them not say that there wasn't a concern about the drought. But my goal is to come up with better standards and guidelines for us to pull off the shelf when we have a declared drought emergency or even tiers of, is it severe drought? Is it extreme drought? Where are we at in our drought status so that we can make sure and ask people to work with us and help everybody? The impacts of moratorium, no change to approved and permitted agricultural operations in cannabis cultivation projects. We hear about this quite often. Central Valley, the allocation of water that they're getting above and beyond what they have access to is now 5%. Some people, as low as 0%, I was told. We're not, I'm not looking to do that. Those that have gotten the permits, those that haven't been permitted to do their activity, I want those people to be successful, which is why I want to have this conversation of how can we do better to ensure their success in the future? Limit approvals by, again, putting a line in the sand, saying the state clearinghouse is, enough has been done that stopping that would not make sense. New applications can still be submitted and in my discussions with our community development department, current applications would still continue to proceed so when the moratorium is over. We don't start over from April 12 status. We start over from when the mor, we continue off from where we leave off when the moratorium is over. And my goal is not to have a moratorium that stalls 2023 harvest. My goal is to make sure that what we vet and what we approve for 2023 harvest meets a better threshold than what we've been doing. Again, the outcomes of moratorium is create guidelines of BMP during declared droughts, enhance the hydrology reporting standards and review process to ensure that those who already access water can continue to do so with not a little adverse impacts. So as I said, I met with some stakeholders. I met with the Farm Bureau. I met with our ag commissioner. I met with our Lake County Cannabis Alliance. There's, there's no reason to bring this and blindside everybody. Needed to have those conversations and I wanted to have sincere feedback to provide to all you all in the public as well. I will say that the feedback just, in, seems to just depend, what is your position? Are you being impacted because you're part of the industry or are you part of the general public? Because it's a very different situation at that point. The general public as a whole, from what I've received, is positive. They're very concerned about the drought and they're very concerned about us continuing to add on more during a severe drought, more request for more water to be used. From the ag industry, I've been asked that we, that why are we asking for a moratorium when there's no projects? Well, that doesn't mean that there's not a project coming up soon and I'd rather be proactive than, oops, missed something. But that was one of their requests. Another one was that the moratorium would be bad for the industry. It would say that we're not open for business. And I'll just remark that I think that ensuring that all projects care about our community and that we're doing the right thing with the right tools to vet the projects is a good thing. I don't see that as being a bad thing, but I get it from their perspective. And then instead of a moratorium, they're saying, why not just ask us for BMP? And then instead of a moratorium, they're saying, why not just ask us for BMPs and enhance hydrology standards to solve problems? And, and I'll say this, when? When is that going to happen? And I feel that a moratorium puts fire to ensure that we get those out as quickly as possible. We are what's being called a 22-year drought. At what point are we planning to come up with BMPs? Also, we're being told this is one of the harshest droughts in over 1,200 years. Now that covers the entire Southwest, so that doesn't necessarily dictate what's happening specifically in Lake County. But however, we are enduring impacts of that type of drought. For cannabis, mainly the issue was with the timeline that people have had to deal with in order to go through the process, in order to get their licenses. And that this would be unfair to suddenly put a pause. And same thing as ag, no to a moratorium. Instead, just request for BMPs and enhance hydrology standards to solve problems. And again, I think that this lights a fire to say, when? Rather than waiting, I want to make sure we get there. And would, they would prefer no new applications than a moratorium as well. I appreciated the conversations that I had. I'm not going to stand here and be a concrete stone that doesn't move and flex with making something that works for all of us. But I feel like we're waiting for something to organically happen to save us from the drought, like it's just going to happen by next year or it should have happened this year. And again, I feel like if I wait another year and not bring this discussion to a greater audience and a greater context, that, that we may miss the train and, and make future, further mistakes. I want to protect our ag and our cannabis businesses that are here. This is not meant to be as a strike. This is not to say anything negative about them. They create jobs, they create our economy. We are an agricultural county. I want to make sure that that continues, not in the near future, but in the far future. And that is what I have right now. It's a tough topic. It gets very personal for those who are in the industries. I think that we have the skill sets to be able to come back with something. I'm hoping in less than 90 days. The, for the cannabis side, for the 15 that are going through the process that are at the state clearinghouse or have already been in the state clearinghouse or are being prepared right now for a PC review, for a planning commission review. All of those to get to the planning commission, to get to all 15, possibly by July 1st. And there's only one more meeting before August. How much more time is there to plant after the fact? So what is the true impact to that industry if there is a pause? Again, the pause is not meant to be permanent. It's supposed to help us ensure that we're vetting things correctly in the future. And so I'm going to leave it at that. I'm going to stop sharing and open for questions from the board, if you have any.
Vice Chair Scott.
You're right, this is a tough topic, talking about our drought. I disagree, I don't think this is the way to go about it. I don't agree with a moratorium. We at this point have tasked our CDD director to come back with a new ordinance looking at our cannabis. She's supposed to be coming back within the next month. I think we really need to give her that time to do that. I, I think if we go forward and have this moratorium, it's just going to punish the good actors. And the bad actors are going to continue wasting water, using our water. We're going to have more illegal grows. It's just not going to solve the issues. I personally would like to see enhanced hydrology standards, be able to go and attack those people that are punished or fined or whatever, or talk to those people that are out there watering, you know, at the heat of the night or heat of the day. I think we need to have that instead of just the moratorium and, and give our CDD director time to come back with an ordinance. So I think we have to be really careful. We can't have knee jerk reactions to things. And I just think we need to be really cautious.
Supervisor Pieska.
So I said many times in this room last summer and last fall, we have to plan like it's not going to rain. And we have done a great deal of things and maybe you're not seeing them. And you know, waiting for things to happen organically, you know. Let's roll back to the EA moratorium. And that arguably did this, right? We don't have, we don't have new EAs going in without SEQA analysis, without the vetted analysis that we need. So that paused that. But that also triggered the committee that Supervisor Simon and I were on before we had a CDD director to streamline the process, which went into reworking the ordinance. And our new hires, our new staff in CDD is looking at the science detailed, looking at drought history, looking at hydrology, looking at environmental impacts in ways that our ordinances hasn't before and our standards haven't before. So we're just a few weeks away from seeing that. And this moratorium is going to derail that work. We have finite resources with our staff. We only have so many hours of the day. And that is the important work that we need to keep our momentum on. And, and I'm sure if we wanted to ask staff, they would come on and, and talk about some of those things. But we should wait until they're ready for their full presentation. Now, if you have a moratorium and you're only going to allow these 14 projects to go through, the rest of the projects that are in the pipeline wouldn't be planting this year anyway. And I, you know, so you say, what does it matter? But, but they have other things to do. They have to get their state license. There's other planning that goes into this and we're just going to stop that work that we've been, I mean, some of these projects have been two, maybe three years in the pipeline. And it's, you know, we've had staffing issues, we've had turnover. We've had a lot of things happen in our department that through no fault of these applicants or changing our, our, our practices, changing so that we have more rigorous requirements to make things better, I'll say better, for the drought and requirements. And we've been doing that work. So to say that nothing's been happening is wholly untrue. And it might be that you're not seeing that. And I can understand that because you weren't in our committee. But we did have a presentation from Director Darby in February. And she did promise to bring this ordinance. And we are going to be working with our industry. And, and the, the end goal of that is to get to a place of sustainability for our county. And they're doing the research on the watersheds. You know, they're, they're mapping all of those things out. And we can't make this ordinance and this decision, it's very knee jerk when we have all this work that we've dedicated a year almost to this work. And then this didn't go past the ag committee, which is an advisory committee. It meets a couple of times a year. This is where we get input from our ag industry. And I know you came to that committee last year when we were still forming our bylaws and it was a little baby committee and it still is, and, and asked for something like this. But that committee is not staff and, and they didn't have the capacity to do that. And they asked for more research, but we don't have a CDD director. So we couldn't go down that road. So yes, the best practices, that, that did stall out a bit. But that's what our comprehensive drought committee is for. And that's why I brought that up last summer, to start working on the long-term plans for these things. And that committee isn't seated yet. It hasn't had its first meeting yet as its new, in its new role to include public and industry. So I think that work is going to come out of that committee. But you're right, there's no fire because it hasn't been established yet. But once that committee is, is seated and functioning and has objectives and a mission, then we're going to get there. But I, I don't see how this urgency ordinance fix, fixes anything that we're not already working on and, and doesn't really change things for this summer. If you want to protect the drinking water, which is what it says here, the illegal grows. I mean, that will make the biggest, most immediate impact is going after those illegal grows this year, this summer, right now. So, you know, I, this is a long-term strategy. This drought didn't come out of nowhere. It's not the first drought, it's not the last drought. But we do have to work collaboratively and we do have to come up with plans, practices, strategies so that we have a sustainable future for all of us. But it's got to be well thought out and we have to have that strategy. It has to be deliberate. And we can't just pile things on staff all the time. Other things will fall apart and we have to make that decision. So if we're to pile this on staff right now, we have to ask all of the department heads that are going to be affected by this, what's going to fall by the wayside? And we have to know that clearly before we go into something like this.
Any other comments? Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, complicated conversation, there's no doubt about it. You said that at the beginning, Supervisor Sabatier. But at this time, I completely agree with what's already been said by Supervisor Scott and also Supervisor Pieska that, you know, we're doing the work. We've got work to do. If we're looking at a long-term strategy, a lot of different changes need to happen, not just two industries, the entire way we think about how we're living on this earth and how we're dealing with it. You know, and I just talk about the simple things of, you know, can, let's just try something here in the room. Raise your hand if you have a grass lawn at your home right now. Does anyone have a grass lawn around their house? Please raise your hand. You have a lawn around the house that you frickin' stay in? There you go, man. You know, there's little things that are going to look at the long-term opportunities to change this environment as we move through it. And yeah, there are small things, but you know, you look outside the windows here at the courthouse. You, you've got grass and other things, it's watered every day. These are other things, yeah, they look pretty, but are they really for sustaining life? No. And these are the opportunities we need to look at it for the long-term. Storage of water, I think that's huge for the long-term process here in Lake County. I asked when they came out with this infrastructure bill, Congressman Thompson, are we going to be building dams in Lake County? Can we do that? You know, when I grew up, there was a long conversation about a dam in Dry Creek on the backside of Middletown. You know, where's that conversation going? You know, what are we looking at to do those types of things? The other thing too, coming from a tribal and a cultural standpoint is we've got the oldest natural lake in our backyard. We don't frickin' have any control of the water. It just blows me away. You know, maybe we could look at a long-term opportunity where the county and its residents work with the tribal folks that were first, that's our water. And our tribal residents weren't, our tribal communities were not at the table when it was taken and it was divided up. So how about we work together as a people and we're talking about rising up from all people in this county and maybe have that fight? You know, I think it, look at those long-term opportunities. I know, you know, I'm preaching or whatever, but it's no different than what you're doing today to try and get your stuff across there. But we've got to change these things. You know, we've got to look at those opportunities, looking at small opportunities, collect rainwater out of your gutters so you can water your plants as you move forward. There are all types of opportunities we do. I think the moratorium issue, what really scares me when I ran for this board is economic development. I sat, you know, as a tribal leader as we vote, building our economy as a tribe as we, we've been able to do now. We were given an opportunity with gaming. We have other opportunities to do things as we move forward. But we've got to look at it holistically as we move forward. And I've always had a problem with water. You know, from the agricultural standpoint, you know, I look at all these things and I sit around this diocese and listen, you know, from our tribe, I just look at, we were surrounded by vineyards. No one came and asked the tribe, hey, you care if we put a vineyard and allow a vineyard to go right up to your frickin' boundaries? No, because we didn't have any representation. It was just built right around us because, you know, we didn't have that. So I think we need to look at this stuff holistically. I don't think you're off the mark, but there are things that need to change for each and every one of us in our lives. And, you know, to make sure that we can sustain those things, it's hard. So bottom line, I'm not in favor of the moratorium today. They're going to say, you know, Supervisor Simon's all for cannabis or whatever. But I'm, I'm for looking at solutions from the industry leaders that are in this thing and to help and to ask them for it. I am not a hydrologist. I know that I turn the tap on, it comes out because we're part of Caliomi, but always trying to conversate with them. For the south end of the county, we got work to do. I've got to get water to those constituents past the rancheria. Yes, but that's been happening all our lives for trucking of water. And so each one of these climates, as you said, is different. So I know there's going to be a lot of comments today on both sides of this issue. And people are going to look at it one way or the other. I know it was just a small handful of people who said they had a lawn here. I gotta say, there's probably more than that or an apartment they're staying in that's got something. So little things like that, I think can make an ultimate big change on stuff. But I, I'm not in favor of the moratorium at this point on the industries. And hopefully that more will come out of it. It's a good discussion and we'll continue the work that we're doing. And that's where I'm at today.
Thank you, Mo. And, all right. So I appreciate you bringing this and working on this Supervisor Sabatier. In, in my district, in my town halls, there's been a lot of discussion about water in general. We've had many appeals and one of the biggest subjects is always water. And it's even been more prevalent now and closer to this situation of the drought. Whereas before, there were other reasons to object to any project or whatever the case may be. But as a supervisor with three municipal advisory committees, each one of them says the same thing for me. And I do appreciate everything that's said from my colleagues and I agree with you. I agree with the things, the work is being done. I agree with, Mo, that's one of the things I've always thought of is why, why can't we ensure that the tribes were considered first for the water and agree with the county and make some sort of deal? I know it's a long shot and I know there's a lot of more legalities to it. And it's maybe a pie in the sky for me too, but I, I think that's an avenue, you know. Tina, I appreciate your words as well. But I think 45 days, a moratorium for 45 days would allow the staff to catch up. I know that they're working on this as well. And so I would have no problem considering a moratorium for 45 days despite the fact that it would affect some of you here. And, you know, I know many of you here and I know you work hard for what you do. And I appreciate that, but at the same time, we're at where we're at with this drought. But nonetheless, we will allow you all to come up and speak for public comment and give your statements. And, and we'll try to keep it to two minutes if at all possible. And we'll go from there. So open public comment. Good, sir.
Hi, Board, thank you. Tyler Mitchell, Kelseyville. As cannabis prepares to assist with the tragedy of the commons, the BMPs, would that be a blanket for all cannabis approved or potentially to be approved?
I, I, I think we'd have to look because everybody grows a little bit differently. Depends if you're in pots, if you're in soil. That one's a difficult task to take on, but I think it's possible to come up with BMPs that work.
For, just as a blanket, just for the whole, approved or not approved? Just, just curious.
I, I don't have the details and I, I'm not a hydrologist either. And I, I think that we need somebody with that skill set to be able to help us create that. Right now, what's created is very vague of what's required.
Thank you, Tyler.
Frank Perez from Rancho Dela Fuente. I've been listening to everything that the supervisor said and I agree with Supervisor Simon. I think that we can do better with the public conserving water, not watering their grass. I just moved into a new house and I, I have no plants there because I know that we're in a water situation and a drought. And I'm not going to plant things just to make it look beautiful when we're short with water. I understand that. When I take a shower, I'm not in there for two hours. You know, people can conserve, businesses can conserve and keep everybody working and keep the economy going. There's other ways to look at it than just doing this moratorium where it provides work and everything for the community and keeps our community strong. So I, I urge that we look at where we can serve, you know, with these different growers. For example, the pear growers. I'm not singling them out, but I knew they, I know they do flood irrigation. Can't there be a better way to water those pears than to just pour all that water out into the ground? I mean, there's a lot of other things to look at besides doing a moratorium and stopping our economy. It just doesn't make sense to me. There's other ways to attack it.
Thank you, Frank.
Richard Durham, thank you. Let me speak. Regarding the moratorium on new cannabis projects in Lake County, as we've seen legalization has brought us new challenges. This past year, it became obvious that there was a bottleneck in the supply chain, everyone harvested at the same time. This has changed the industry. Outdoor legacy growers will have to become about 10 to 15% of this supply chain. The rest will be done in mixed light greenhouses, which are more sustainable as the farmer will have three fresh harvests per year, allowing them year-round employees instead of massive harvesting crews at the end of the season. This will be better for the farmers, the employees and water conservation. If you place a moratorium at this point, the farmers will not be able to apply for change in their, in their style of growing. Not allowing people to switch from type three outdoor grows to mixed light gardens will put Lake County farmers at a great disadvantage in the industry. Allowing the moratorium also affects the ancillary businesses such as compliance consultants, cultivation managers and other industry-related businesses, including our own CDD. All persons waiting in the queue right now probably won't be able to grow in time for this year, so making the urgency is unnecessary. And as a cultivation consultant, I did see that the industry flipped last year and the legacy growers or the full sun outdoor growers are having a super hard time selling their cannabis because everybody wants fresh cannabis. And by, by not allowing existing projects in a moratorium, the ability to change to a more sustainable farming is just really going to damage the industry. So I'll stop there.
Thank you, Richard.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just as a point of information, for this urgency ordinance to pass, it would require four of the five of your members to, to adopt it.
Right. And so basically with everyone's testimonial from the board already, it doesn't look like we'll obtain that. So, Michael? No, I'm sorry, not Michael.
No, you got it. You got it. Thank you. I guess I'll just pick up where Richard left off. You know, when we talk about being able to convert over into greenhouses, you know, the ability to do recycling water programs, right? So hydroponics, you can recycle the water, it can be utilized over and over again, really limits the amount of evaporation. And so I think with that, what I want to point out is that when we look to you guys as our leaders, what we're looking for are solutions to problems. And I think that creating this moratorium just creates further problems. You guys are super capable and very willing to work with everybody, both sides of ag. And I think that we're looking for ways that we can continue doing what we're doing or have that economic development and make the changes like Simon put forward that are relatively small but make big impacts. I think also with that, if you look at the state of California, the Water Board, they're prohibited uses and what they've set as a standard of how to control or hold as much water as they can, they're very clear about frivolous use of water, right? Cleaning things that don't need to be cleaned or ornamental lawns and things like that. So those are prohibited through that. And I feel like the state Water Board being in charge of that just by itself is, they have a very good concept of what things need to be done. When it gets to the availability of water in this area, Mo made this huge point about the lake, right? And it's something that everybody's thought of or looked at, right? It's a major question in everybody's mind, we have all this water, but how come we can't use it? So again, I want to go back to finding solutions to problems, not creating more problems when we already have problems. And I think that's what everybody is looking for. You guys have this very important job, you know? Tough times make great leaders and what people are looking for are great leaders. We need help, but it's not by going backwards, it's going forwards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Robert Moody and I'm from Kelseyville, California. I'm actually a new resident of Lake County and I actually came up here for exactly the reasons that were discussed amongst this group of people. This is a beautiful county with an agricultural community that needs to see the future of longevity. I agree with everybody that's spoken today that progress is being made and will be continued to be made, but I think the emphasis should be on the side of caution. I do not believe that emergency orders should be used to single out individual communities that share resources or have similar impact. I also don't believe that you should affect small businesses that are, have already been in the queue for as long as they have been and follow the regulations that you've required only to be stopped for 45 days. We've, we've done what you've asked and we're asking that we've continued on the process. BMPs and additional regulations, we've always agreed to. One of the questions was asked, why don't we have lawns? We got rid of them. Like the fact is, we knew we were using the water for other purposes and we wanted to conserve. So I really do think that this is an issue of common sense and I think it should be attacked that way. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'm not picking on lawns, just made an observation.
Hello again, Patty Lanier from Noble Gardens. I'm a small farmer in Lower Lake. And earlier today, you guys all got a letter from me. I don't know if you noticed it, it came in at 7:45. And in that, I just wanted to read a little bit of what I wrote. That cannabis is in a constant state of adaptation because we're farmers. Farmers are constantly engaging with their landscape, the climate, the environment, pests. All of these things require us to adapt. In addition to that, we've had to adapt to the ordinance changes. We've had to adapt to state regulations. Many of us have been operating since before Prop 64. I was a Prop 215 farmer, providing compassionate medicine to the community. Now, I've adapted to everything that the county has asked me to do, that the state has asked me to do. And at this time, I'm trying to adapt to the environment and to the guidance that I received from the planning department. I was guided by the planning department to grow outdoor. At that time, I had submitted for a mixed light with no light assist. I didn't even want electricity in my hoops. I only wanted to adjust the grow cycle of my plants. Why? Because I wanted to keep my staff small. I wanted to maintain intimacy with my garden and the medicine that I'm producing. I wanted to reduce the use of water and all of the products that I use, whether they're biological, whether they're good for the environment, whether they are nutrients, it didn't matter. I wanted to reduce what I'm applying to the surface of the earth and what I'm using from the earth, mainly water. I was steered away from that by the planning department and told to do an outdoor grow. Now I'm in an outdoor grow. I always wanted to do mixed light. Now I'm being told I have to apply for a new license. If this moratorium goes through, I won't be able to reduce, I won't be able to adapt. You're going to take that opportunity away from me and everyone else in this room if that's what we impose. And it's based on a discriminatory...
Ms., thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if you, I stated it earlier and I probably should have been more direct. Obviously, there's going to, this moratorium is probably not going to pass. There's already three supervisors that have stated they're not going to approve it. It needs a 401 vote. So I understand you want to make your comments, but just stating that for the, so people know.
Thank you, Chair Crandall. And we would be remiss as the Lake County Cannabis Alliance if we did not weigh in on the record. So my name is Sarah Bodnar, Policy Advisor to LCCA, and I want to invite anybody who's behind me who would like to stand up in opposition to the moratorium and perhaps forego your time to speak. So if you stand up in opposing the moratorium, feel free to do so as I speak. The Lake County Cannabis Alliance and everybody who's standing behind me acknowledges that the drought is a problem and we're standing here with you today also to work on solutions. A moratorium isn't one of them. Thank you for all the board members who have spoke to, spoken to the other options we have and that's what I'd like to use my time to today, to talk about what we can do together, which would look like true collaboration and working towards better managing our water resources because we are farmers and without water, we cannot farm. So we have a great interest in managing our county's water responsibly. Some solutions we could pursue together. Looking at enhanced best management practices with input from members of the agricultural community that include cannabis operators. Exploring solutions like allowing hoops, which alone could reduce water usage by 30%. That's something we should be looking at in the new ordinance that maybe we had opposition to in the past. Looking at canopy reduction when appropriate, prohibiting overhead sprinklers on other agricultural crops, looking at how we can limit water trucking where appropriate and also allowing cultivation on ag-appropriate lands where there is sufficient water allowable or available, excuse me. This idea that some do a good job, but some don't is really a failure of regulation that we might need to require more up-to-date hydrology studies and go back and look at projects and make sure that we have water available that we're using. Drought is a chronic problem, not a new one. And the solutions that you've already taken action on are a step towards solving that, like requiring the water availability analysis, requiring the drought management plans and doing site-specific review. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And so, and so I'll go to the Zoom room. I have two, two people with their hands up if you can. Michael Paul, if you can mute yourself and you have two minutes.
Hey, thanks for the time. My name's Michael Paul and I'm actually in agreement with everyone here. I believe we have a water crisis. I've got a bunch of tulie on my property that the Big Valley folks are, have an open invitation to come and harvest whenever they want. And I've got a giant valley oak on my property that's the size of a semi-truck and I've got about 600 walnut trees that I plan on decommissioning. Those walnut trees use 90 acre feet of water per year. And with the, with my current plans, we'll be moving to cannabis and that proposal only uses two acre feet of water per year. So some projects that are being proposed will actually help the county's water crisis. Comparing the water use of cannabis to other crops, it's clear that this proposal lacks strategy. I hope that the hydrologists of this county can come back with a, a more strategic plan to solve our county's water crisis. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Next is phone 6205, if you can unmute, you have two minutes.
Hello, this is Bart Levinson. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I don't know if you recall, but the first presentation Mary Darby made to you, to all of us in the Board of Supervisors meeting, she said something that seemed very important. She said that previous to her arrival, her staff had not been properly trained to read hydrology reports. So I wonder how you could really effectively have this conversation about this matter today without including Mary Darby and finding out more the status of what she discovered about her, her department's prior ability to correctly interpret hydrology reports and her capacity and ability to, going forward, address hydrology reports because the, because the drought is happening upon us, like COVID came upon us, things are happening in real time. There aren't regulations for the planners to look at that look carefully enough at water conservation because there hasn't been a need like there is now. This is new territory and this is a bit of a matter of scale. One of the projects already approved is a large one in Middletown, that this one project alone is saying that they're going to use two-thirds, the amount of water equal to two-thirds of the entire year's use for Middletown of water.
If you can wrap up your comments, your two minutes is up.
If you individually, it's your industry altogether, it matters.
Thank you. Next, Betsy Khan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to everybody doing this work. I have a slightly different question and a comment. My question is for Mr. Sabatier. In one of your slides, you indicated that there were approximately 800 acres in the applications being processed right now for cannabis. And then in your next slide, you mentioned there being 15 projects of the 235 acres. I mean, I just would like to know if you could correlate the, the two measurements, the, if you reduce the number of projects to 15 that are in the queue now, would that equal still 800 acres or would it be less? And given the, the status of the response from the board, I realize this is kind of a moot point, but I just thought I'd ask you. My comment is this, certainly we've had, since 2014, we have had express need for responses to drought conditions, planning for drought conditions, updating our, our ordinances and our regulations. We've had a constant replacement of one committee by another committee. I really laud your, your board's long-term economic development programs and everything that you've all tried to do, but I would really like to see you create a literal plan to address all of these pieces that need to be fixed. Instead of having meetings like this, at this point, it's about this particular part of the water problem. So I just would encourage you to do that, please. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to see any other hands up in the Zoom room, so I'll close.
May I respond to? So just to provide a little bit more insight, I believe that at this moment in time in CDD and community development, we have 133 applications for cannabis that equate to over 800 acres. Of those 15, I cannot provide you the exact acreage that those represent. I was not provided that information, nor did I ask specifically for that information. And the 235 was the increase of acres that have been approved since 2018 when, since Prop 64 has been passed.
All right. And so I'm going to close the Zoom room comments and I'll allow the last two here that since they're standing up, so if you can state your name for the record and you have two minutes.
Sharon Zoller from Kelseyville. To follow what Representative Pyska said, I'm the chairperson of the Ag Advisor Committee and I would like to request on their behalf that this concern come to the committee for their review of the information, by the way, it was very interesting, the information that you gave earlier, and to provide some recommendations to the Board of Supervisors when considering this very complicated project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zoller.
Good afternoon. My name is Will Weiss. I'm with Belavista Farming Company and a member of the Lake County Farm Bureau Board of Directors. I do not speak on behalf of the Lake County Farm Bureau today, but I would like to say that I am pleased to see that the moratorium is not going to likely be adopted. Nothing pleases me more than to see bad policy fail, but on the other hand, I think that Supervisor Sabatier comes to us with legitimate concerns and I think that we all in this room have different takes on the situation, but nevertheless, a concern for the resources that we have available in the county. And I think the biggest problem I have and the thing I wanted to address here is that all of us took time from our days to be here. I understand that the supervisors all have an obligation to be present and that's, I'm grateful for your service, all of you. Thank you very much. But this is time away from our jobs and our lives and this is not the process by which this should be occurring. There are committees that have been assembled and in, I guess in a certain case, not yet seated, but nevertheless, committees of relevance that have been assembled. There is no reason why this could not have been sent to those committees. There is no reason why this could not have been sent to those committees. There is no violation of any Brown Act, really reasons related to that, because multiple other individuals who sit on those committees could bring forward language of this type. So that concludes my comments, but I do hope we can bring this matter back. I do think that this is worthy of further discussion, but I think starting with the word moratorium and starting with the targeting of certain industries is the wrong way to go about it. Thanks.
Thank you. And so I'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the board. So Supervisor Pyska.
I mean, I do appreciate that we had this conversation today, and this work is important. It is ongoing. It needs to remain our top priority, and I know you and I are going to be working on that comprehensive drought committee. The idea came to me last year when I realized that we did not have kind of an easy button way for people to even bring gray water into their homes, not bring it into their homes, use it for their landscaping. But it's those simple measures that each of us can do, but we also need to be looking at all, so then the reason we decided to have this internally is to look at our policy as a county and the ways that we can improve within our departments and our procedures. But now we've, we've found the need to really work with the public and our, all of our industries, all of our communities, and this, this is going to continue to be a collaboration among all of us. And, and it does need to be one of our top priorities as we move forward. It goes hand in hand with our economic development goals because this is what will sustain us. So appreciate that we had the conversation. I, you know, I don't think that this is the right track. I'm always a long-term visioner. I like to develop my strategy, set those objectives, and, and work towards that long goal. And, and we probably, it's not a goal that we'll ever get to because we're always going to need to be improving as we go. We're never going to reach that goalpost, but we just have to stay committed to doing the work together.
All right. So I, I think we're at a point where-
I, I appreciate everybody's feedback, and I understand where everybody is coming from, and I hope that we can come back sooner than later with some changes that will help us better proceed through these difficult droughts that we will continue to experience. And we, we can talk about any of the topics that have been brought up on how we can make those changes, and I hope that we will see some of those topics coming back, rather than just talking about it today and then not coming back with it.
All right. Is there any action that needs to be taken, or are we just going to let it go?
I have a feeling that there is no action taken today.
So then no A, B, and then we basically discussed C and D?
B is gone, and C is, I know that there was a complication because there is a Brown Act issue of what's my request from Ag and how do I get that to Ag Advisory Board? And so today, I would like to at least put it out there before making a motion saying I'd like to direct the Ag Advisory Board to tackle the subject of BMPs, and I, I think that's the easiest one.
Well, let's, let's look at that. So the Ag Committee is a group of volunteers who are professional farmers and all through the industry, and we're only meant to meet a couple of times a year. There's no staff, so putting something in front of the Ag Committee and the industry to get their thoughts is the better way to go. We can't, and this is the problem we ran into last year, we can't ask, we can't put work on volunteers. The work, this work, and even in our, our drought, comprehensive drought group, we're going to have a lot of volunteers, but we're also going to have a lot of staff there. And so as we put together the strategy on how we get there, we have to identify who's going to be responsible for that work. And so we, we have an Ag Committee tomorrow. We put this on the agenda to discuss, but, but the expectation should be set. That's really all that group can handle.
And when I say come back with BMPs, I'm talking about, give us some, some feedback, give us some guidance so that then the other drought task force can commit to creating and crafting the guidelines. That's a good correction, but I think that the stakeholders know better than anyone what they can and can't do in order to still be successful in their endeavor to harvest a crop that is marketable.
Sure.
And I don't want to make those decisions for them, or else-
Right.
-that creates other problems.
So we have our, our drought task force group, which has been a working group, which, when we discussed building the comprehensive drought group, we would bring that in as a working group. I don't remember, I, I know that there were civic sparks on that task force group, and I believe Deputy Director Delejana said some of them aren't here anymore, so I don't actually know who's on that group anymore to do the work. But the comprehensive drought committee will have industry representatives, Ag, cannabis, everybody should be there, and there are going to be public meetings. I think that is probably the better place for that type of work because we're going to have staff there, we're going to have department heads, and we can kind of dig into that deeper and then bring it to the Ag Advisory Committee for further-
Review and feedback.
There you go.
Okay. And, and even though the committee's not created at this moment in time because membership will be coming back soon, I have spoke with Water Resources, and I don't know if that's next week or the following week that we'll be coming back. But I still suggest that today, we task that task force with looking at those things and, and working to bring those things back.
I do, yeah. I absolutely agree, but with the expectation that it's going to take a little while to get that group up and running, and sometimes if you dump a whole load on something right when it's getting formed, it can stall out. So just keeping that in mind, because that, that group was formed for long work. The other thing that was in here, or in your memo somewhere, was the illicit grows, and I brought that up, and that, you know, want to look at water users who are unregulated and doing it illegally and really impacting neighbors.
And that was part of my, I guess maybe I skipped straight to, no, that was part D that I wanted to talk. So yes, that is something that I wanted to at least discuss because to have a conversation about drought and not talk about the illegal activities that are happening around our communities regarding water would be offensive to anybody trying to do things correctly and above board.
And I heard you say something earlier that I, that I, that clicked in my mind when you said we're kind of just like figuring out who's taking the resources and fighting about them, basically. And that happens also when we're talking about, like, just, for example, the Lake Pillsbury situation in the Eel River, and everyone's worried about specific things, yet forgetting about all of the illicit grows that are pulling out of those two tributaries. And so it's the same thing here, Spring Valley, all of these tributaries throughout the county, people are doing that, and then the folks that are upset about the water are taking it out, and the folks that are trying to do the right thing. And sometimes that gets complicated, and so I'm glad that you brought up illicit grows. Again, I'd really like to figure out something to start tackling that. I know it's a big monster, but it, it has to be done, you know, so.
And my request for that is, and it's been made before, but I will make it again, we need to publicly share what our strategy is to hold our feet to the fire, to be accountable for taking care of this problem. It's a problem that has grown and grown, and we struggle to make a dent, and I really think that we need to understand how we're using our satellite imagery, understand how we're using our code enforcement team that we've bolstered up and, and made it into a stronger team, how we're using our administrative fines. At this moment, all of those things have not come together to show me that we're, that we have a plan put together, and I want to make sure that there is a plan on how we're going to attack that.
And maybe we need to really schedule that for sometime in May so that we're, we can hear from law enforcement and code enforcement and all of our partners to figure out, let all of us know what the strategy is and, and get our input.
Yes.
And I think the 26th, they'll be coming back discussing part of it, roadmap task force, and that's, has some inkling of it, it's part of it.
In one area.
Yeah, in one area. But yeah, but I mean, that's just part of it, you know, but yeah, I think we should come back in May, talk about it.
Yep.
I think for, are we finished with seed? Should we open it up for public? Is that, this is the next item, right? Yeah. So-
Just in the interest of time, Mr. Chair, you may want to take up a discussion of D too, if you still have that, and then open it up for public comment as to-
All right.
-to everything that's discussed rather than one by one by one.
Right. Let's do that, discussion of other actions regarding drought.
And that was the illicit grows, and there are other potential ordinances that will be coming. I know that one of my issues that I've seen is, it's very strange to me that we go through such a rigorous process for planting a plant with SEQA and checking water and hydrology reports, but if I get a permit for a well, I can sell all the water I want from my well, and there's no permits, and there's no, there's no prohibitions or anything like that. And I, I want to see us having a little bit more regulation on those types of things, and that's where our water trucks are going. And so we need to be careful because water purveyors should not be impacted in a negative way, but at the same time, we need to make sure that what's being taken from below the ground is not having an impact on the neighbors, and those wells that are selling commercially the water from their well, we need to make sure that they're, they're not having the impacts that we are trying to be careful and be wary of when providing these types of permits to agriculture or other projects. And so I think it needs to be somewhat similar. But just wanted to at least state there's other issues regarding water and, and that we need to face on as well. That's it.
All right. So there's nothing else from the board. I'll open it up for public input on items C and D. If there's anyone that wants to add or has any comment about what we discussed. Not seeing anybody. I see somebody online with their hand up, so I'll, Betsy Khan, if you can unmute, you have two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and once again, thank you, supervisors, and especially Supervisor Sabatier. When, when you talk about all the water regulation, especially the, the absolutely absurd groundwater management ordinance and the grading ordinance, which are totally in conflict with conservation, I would just like to ask that you address and include all of the water purveyors, all of the different types of water purveyors. As it stands right now, the Risk Reduction Authority only has representation from the public water systems, which are county public water systems, but there are something like 80 different water systems in the county. 17 of them use lake water, and we have no backup plan for supporting those folks with groundwater for a variety of reasons. So I would just really want to urge you to, to please include all of the water purveyors. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll close public input and bring it back to the board. And so with item C-
I think we had consensus as far as making that part of the drought task force and waiting for the right time.
The comprehensive drought committee. The drought task force is going to be a working group of the comprehensive drought committee.
Okay. I, I'm confused.
We're trying to unsilo.
I, I know I asked Water Resources, and I thought that was the name of the committee, so eventually I'll get it.
All right. All right. So with that, I think that's, I think we're, we're finished. And so we'll close this item on the agenda, and that completes our agenda for the day. So thank you, everybody, for coming. I understand it was a long day, and we appreciate your insight, input, and your comments. We'll adjourn this meeting.